The 2:00 PM session of Roanoke City Council for December the 6th, 2021 is hereby called to order, and I'll ask our clerk, Ms. Susan McCord, to please call the row.
Vice Mayor White Boyd.
Here.
Mr. Beszic.
Here.
Mr. Cobb.
Here.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
Here. And call, Mr. President. This afternoon, I will lead you in both the invocation and also the pledge of allegiance. So I would ask you to stand as we have our invocation. Let us pray. Eteral God, our Father, we come to you at this appointed time, first and foremost, to thank you for all that you have done for us. And Lord, this evening, as we come as elected and appointed officials, we ask you for your guidance as we go forth to do what we feel is best for this valley. We thank you, Lord, for how you've watched over and blessed us, and we ask you, Lord, to continue to bless those in our community who are bereaved. Give them strength and courage as they go forth. And Lord, we ask you to continue to bless this valley, this city, and all of us as we do those things that we feel are pleasing in your sight. We give you praise. We give you honor. It is in the name of your son that we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome, everybody, to our first formal session. We had an informal session this morning at 9:00. And while you all, people, are still coming in, let me say that council chamber is, in many cases, no different from the church. It feels up in the back, and you have seats up front. So those of you that are on the wall that need a seat, there are empty seats up here. And everybody has their mask on, so we're going to be very cognizant of that. So there are some seats. And if the numbers get too heavy, we have an overflow room downstairs on the first floor. You can go down there, and this session is being carried down there. So I want you to be as comfortable as you can. Council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RV TV, Channel 3, on Thursdays at 7:00 PM and Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And I just learned this morning that that's continuous on Saturday morning from 10:00 to 5:00. You can watch this session, and you can watch you if some of you come up and speak. You can watch that process. And it's video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the hearing impaired. All right, announcements. The council of the city of Roanoke is seeking applications for the following current vacancies and/or upcoming expiration of terms of office. The Fair Housing Board, one vacancy. The Roanoke Civic Center Commission, one vacancy. The Roanoke Neighborhood Advocates, two vacancies. The Roanoke Valley Regional Cable Television Committee, one vacancy. The Toying Advisory Board, one vacancy, and that's a citizen at large. The Youth Athletics Review Boards, there are three vacancies. And so if any of these vacancies on boards or commission, you can access the city's homepage to complete an online application, or you can contact the clerk's office, and they will guide you and walk you through this process. But as a council, we are always appreciative of those citizens that want to come forward and help us as we govern the city. And so we encourage you to fill out an application for a position on a board or commission that we will be appointing. All right. Now we're down to presentations and acknowledgements. And I'm going to ask Amelia Merchant, Director, Director of Finance and Staff to join me at the podium. I'll interview her. I don't see Amelia. Well, you all come on down. Thanks.
No, Amelia's not, didn't make it in.
Yeah, I don't know where Amelia is, so.
Just going to go ahead.
Mary, you want to, Mary, the kind of interviews are, and either one of you can introduce what it is, and then the points that the mayor wants to make as well, then. So we don't have the, we don't actually have the plaque with us.
All right, well, let me, I want to recognize you all for the work you've done. We have a plaque. I guess it got lost in, in the process, you know, mail and, inter-mail, all that's running slow these days, so. But we want to recognize you for the great work you're doing. And the fiscal year 2021 Cities and Pension Plan Annual Comprehensive Financial Report have received certificates of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association. Thank you. Congratulations for that. And the certificate, this certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting. And its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. So you all have done an outstanding job, and we wanted to recognize you and let the public recognize you for the work that you're doing. It's tough now in these day of number crunching and what have you, but you all still stand the test of time. You're doing an outstanding job, and we appreciate that, and we wanted to just recognize you for that. And so again, thank you. And any of you want to say a few words?
And Mayor, I just want to let you know that our finance directors.
Amelia is behind you now.
Is here.
All right, Amelia, come on down. Come on in.
I know she's usually shy, Mayor, but she needs to get recognized as well.
We don't have the plaque, the awards. We'll give that to you later. But we wanted to thank you all. Thank you for your leadership and great people for the work they're doing. And please have a few words to just acknowledge that. Thank you. Amelia Merchant.
Thank you, Mayor Lee, and members of city council. Just want to thank you for the recognition today, and I want to publicly thank this team who worked very hard to represent the city of Roanoke and all of the great things that they are doing to ensure that our finances are done correctly. And we've been doing that for over 40 years with the GFOA award, and very appreciative of the hard work that has gone into the receipt of this award that is before you today.
Well, thank you. Members of council, any comments or thoughts you have?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, let's give them a hand, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All right, we're now down to item number three, which is the hearing of citizens upon public matters. City council sets this term as a priority for you, the citizens, to be heard. And if it is deemed appropriate, all matters will be referred to the city manager for a response or recommendation or report to council. And... Madam Clerk, do you have, call those names of the people that are here to speak?
Yes, we have two speakers. That is Barbara Dirk and Shahid Omar.
No, that's, that's around 20. I don't see it. It's not Barbara Dirk. It's 79. Is Barbara here?
Yes, sir.
All right, come on down.
Well, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
I am Barbara Dirk, and I believe your decisions impact Roanoke's future. The future is not a matter of chance. The future is a matter of choice. The future is not something to be wished for. The future is something to be achieved. Now, I recognize Roanoke as the southwest hub, the hub of southwest Virginia, where the judicial hub, where the medical hub, where the educational hub, where the social services hub, up there, where the transportation hub, where the cultural hub, and where the outdoor hub of southwest Virginia, and the financial hub of southwest Virginia. So let's remember, where are we putting our hub? Is our hub in the center of the city, or is our hub going to be off-center? Where are we putting our, all of these hubs? So just remember that when we're spending our Star City recovery money, because I think that's important. One of the hubs was out of doors, and greenways connect. Greenways connect to our people, our neighborhoods, our work, our services, our schools. Greenways break down barriers and build bridges between communities. I see all types of people on, on the greenways. I see short people, just all different kinds of people, wearing all different clothes. And so I think that we need to establish our greenways. Now, when I'm on the greenways, because it's dark late at night, I carry this with me. Sometimes when I'm being accosted, I tell, oh, this connects to the police department. But it doesn't connect to the police department, but the noise does scare them away. And we need more police. We need more police on the greenways. I appreciate you leaving the bathrooms open, at least some of them, because when I'm out there moving around, that, that it's hard for me to camouflage behind a tree. So, so last week, we had fires in bathrooms at Belmont and bathroom at Fallon Park. So somehow, we need to watch over our greenways. That I also have on my purse, my bags. If you've never tried riding transit or riding your bicycle to get around Roanoke, please do. And these bags are very convenient. They are able to go to the grocery store, and then they implode, and I can carry all my, my goods with me. The big grocery bags that you get at the grocery stores that cost a dollar or something, that they're not convenient for me when I'm out walking to carry all of those with me. They're good for people that have cars. So I would suggest that you look into, to these type of bags. And this one actually came from, do you all recognize it? Came from Stormwater. So they want you to pick up, pick up your litter. So that's, that's what's happening there. I asked you about litter, to prioritize that, and, and I, I am celebrating the last day of Hanukkah and wish you all a happy holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. All right, Madam Clerk, who's the next speaker?
We have one other speaker, Shahid Omar.
Good evening, council members. Be very short. Just wanted to remind you that I did participate as a citizen by developing a proposal for the gun violence situation we have in the city. As a result of, or in the process of, the citizens or the council dealing with the gun violence situation, I want the citizens and the council to be very aware of what's happening with this prosecution of gang members. Gang members are being prosecuted up under what they call the RICO Act. In case you don't know what the RICO Act is, Racketeer Influenced and Corruption Organization Act, passed in 1970. The Racketeer Influenced and Corruption Organization Act is a federal law designed to combat organized crime in the United States. It allows prosecution and civil penalties for racketeering activity performed as part of an ongoing criminal enterprise. There are no gang members in this city that can be called a criminal enterprise. These are young boys, 16, 17 years old, whose mom and their dads are locked up, and they're poor. There's no excuse, but that's a reality. There is no organized crime, and they are not, they are not organized. One boy caught, recognized by the police, standing up in Lansdowne with a sheet of paper about recruiting young boys, joining a gang. There's nothing organized about that. It's not organized crime. The drugs they have been caught with amount to a couple ounces of marijuana. The governor has made that legal. But the, but the prosecutors, the feds, the feds are prosecuting these young boys. And what they're going to do is give them life in prison and never see the street again up under the RICO Act. That's sad. The RICO Act is designed for organized crime, and these young boys are not organized, no criminal enterprise. And the city council members should be rejecting that, should stand up and say, no, uh-uh, we don't need the feds to help us do this. The law is already in place without the RICO Act. The law is already in place in circuit court. The law is already, we don't need the RICO Act. The RICO Act is designed, again, for organized criminals, and these young boys are not organized criminals. Simple as that. So don't get desperate, and that's what that is. That's a desperate move, because we can't find a, a way to stop the gun violence. We should be looking at it in a scientific way. We should be bringing in people who are qualified, Virginia Tech, I offered in my proposal, Dr. Reginald Sharif. I haven't even talked to him about it. He's qualified to do research. We need to research the situation. Why is it happening? Where are these guns coming from? How is it all these young boys got these guns? Where'd they come from? Who is selling them to them? Somebody needs to be prosecuted other than these young boys. We need to go talk to these boys in jail and find out what's going on, because all these, all these people are shooting, shooting each other, not gang members. So what about the other people that are not involved in gangs? Why are they shooting people? So again, don't get desperate. We're going to find the answers. We're going to find out the reasons if we do, if we approach it from a scientific base. But if we approach it from an emotional base, we'll be here discussing this stuff next year this time. Thank you very much.
Mr. Omar, let me ask you something before you go. I understand what you're saying, and I, I thank you for the information you sent us. But it's these young boys that are pulling the trigger, and people are dying. Young 17-year-olds are dying. 15-year-olds are shooting people. They're dying. Now, I understand the guns, and I'm concerned, just as you are, about the guns, but who's pulling the trigger? Is that, do you just, we just, just to let that pass and, and focus on the guns?
But they, but they are not the only ones that are shooting. That's what I'm saying. The gang members are not the only ones. If you look at the, if you look at the people who are being charged, all these people are not gang members. All these people are not 16-year-olds. All these people are not 17-year-olds. There are some people that, that's using guns, not gang members. We should, and what I'm saying, we should be looking past the gang members. We're talking about gang members because we're desperate. And so this is a, this is a, this is a drama. This, this is a, this is a desperation move. Point your hands to the gang members, and then we got everything solved. No, it don't, it's not solved like that. We should be looking at everybody who is shooting guns, not just the gang members. Everybody, that's what I'm saying. And if, and if the gang members are shooting people, they should go to jail. But we don't need the RICO Act to send them to jail. We don't need organized crime to send them to jail. They're not organized criminals. They're young kids that's misled, that's stupid, unintelligent, and they, and they, and they're gang members. But that's, they're gang members all over the United States. We don't need the RICO Act to be prosecute these people. That's what I'm saying.
Well, thank you for the information you sent. We appreciate that. Thank you. All right, are there any more speakers, Madam Clerk?
No, no more speakers.
Thank you all. All right, we're now down to the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by members of city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of the items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the council agenda and considered separately. I need a motion to consider these, to approve the consent agenda.
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Vice Mayor White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Beszic.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the consent agenda is approved. Thank you. Now we're moving into the regular agenda. Item number five is a public hearing. Five A is a proposal of the city of Roanoke to request the General Assembly of Virginia to amend the Roanoke Charter of 1952 to acknowledge the city council general election date has changed from May to November of even-numbered years. Councilmember Will Remdy Beszic and Chairman of our Legislative Committee is the spokesperson. There is a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right, I'll ask the clerk to read the title paragraph.
A resolution petitioning the General Assembly to amend the Roanoke Charter of the 1952 to reflect the change in election dates and meetings of council generally.
All right, and at this time, I'm pleased to recognize the Chairman of our Legislative Committee, Mr. Beszic, Councilman Beszic.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is really just a housekeeping item. The council had already voted to change the elections to November. The General Assembly's now voted to have all municipal elections in November. So we just want our charter to be consistent with what is in the state code and what we're doing, and change the fact that not only the election is in November and not in May, but the terms begin January 1 following each election instead of July 1. So that's, that's really all this is about.
All right. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Of course. We have two speakers.
Yeah, I know, I know. I'll get you. All right, we have some speakers. I'm going to open the public hearing, and we have two, at least two speakers that have signed up to speak on this. So I will ask our clerk to call, to call those speakers.
All right. Our first speaker is Barbara Andes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members, staff. I just, I love housekeeping, and I like everything neat and tidy. So this is great, and I'm really proud to be able to be here on this day that we're formalizing such an important change. And every day I wake up and read the news about going across our country, other states, municipalities, trying to limit access to the, to the voting booth, trying to make it harder for people to vote, making it more confusing and not easier to cast a vote, our, you know, a sacred right that we have in this country. I'm just really proud of Virginia and the changes that were made at the state level, but I'm really proud of this council, Mayor Lee, for, for your leadership and for your, you were on the front edge of this change in the state. You were the, you were the leaders on this most recent effort to really, let's, let's bring the voters to the, to the ballot box. Let's get everyone the same day, the same time period, all of the offices at the same time. When we vote, we vote in November. You made a brave decision when you made this change. The state followed you right behind and, and did it across the state. I'm just really proud of you, and I wanted to be here today to thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Luke Pretty.
Thank you. Mayor Lee, members of council, Vice Mayor White Boyd, for the opportunity to speak to you on this today. First, I'd like to thank Bill Beszic for sponsoring this as a Legislative Committee Chair as a housekeeping item. I do know that this is something that him and I saw differently, at least when it was proposed two years ago. But I do appreciate that he included this on the legislative agenda so that we could formalize the change within Roanoke City's charter.
Yeah, I know, I know. I'll get you. All right, we have some speakers. I'm going to open the public hearing. Uh, and we have two, at least two speakers that have signed up to speak on this. So I will, uh, ask our clerk to, to call, to call those speakers.
All right. Our first speaker is Barbara Andes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, staff. Um, I just, um, I love housekeeping and I like everything neat and tidy. So this is great and I'm, I'm really proud to be able to be here on this day that we're formalizing such an important change. And every day I wake up and read the news about going across our country, other states, municipalities trying to limit access to the, to the voting booth. Um, trying to make it harder for people to vote, making it more confusing and not easier to cast a vote, our, you know, a sacred right that we have in this country. Um, I'm just really proud of Virginia and the changes that were made at the state level. But I'm really proud of this council, Mayor Lee, for, for your leadership and for your, you were on the front edge of this change in the state. You were the, you were the leaders on this most recent effort to really, let's, let's bring the voters to the, to the ballot box. Let's get everyone the same day, uh, the same time period, all of the offices at the same time. Um, when we vote, we vote in November. You made a, a brave, um, decision when you made this change. The state followed you right behind and, and did it across the state. I'm just really proud of you and I wanted to be here today to thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Luke Pretty.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Lee, uh, members of council, Vice Mayor White Boyd, for the opportunity to speak to you on this today. Uh, first, I'd like to thank, uh, Bill Beszic for sponsoring this as a legislative, uh, committee chair as a housekeeping item. I do know that this is something that, uh, him and I saw differently, at least when it was proposed uh, two years ago. Uh, but I do appreciate that, um, he included this, uh, on the legislative agenda so that we could formalize the change within Roanoke City's, uh, charter and, uh, with all time going forward. Uh, I do hope and expect the General Assembly, uh, to vote to authorize this change. We've already held one election, uh, in November, uh, which, uh, the city voters had an opportunity to vote for members of council and mayor, uh, in record numbers that they never had before. We had a record number of votes for, um, our individual, uh, Trish White Boyd, who has elected Vice Mayor. And people had an opportunity to involve themselves in local politics, to get to learn who the people are that serve them on the dais. Uh, I do not think that this change by any ways, uh, nationalized, uh, what's happening locally. But I do think that it elevated local issues to national importance. People are learning who each of you are and they're learning about what happens in the City of Roanoke. You have a full room of people here today who are here to speak on, I believe, other items that are in front of you. But these are the, uh, items that affect them and their community the most. Otherwise, just for saying thank you, just you've joined the rest of the Commonwealth and made history. So, and thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes all of our, uh, citizens who want to speak on this issue.
I, I sent in to speak on this issue.
Oh, we got another speaker? Okay.
Yes, she did. She did number three and number five.
All right.
Yes, that's correct.
Barbara, welcome back. Welcome back.
Dear Mayor and members of council, I have been a leader of a neighborhood, uh, championed the people's voice for years. And this switch to November election caused our voice not to be heard. And I saw many of you saying, oh, we're going to get the vote out, the vote out. And we did. And there were more people that voted than ever before. But I don't know, I didn't hear the issues that were important to the city being discussed. My neighborhood, uh, neighbors in South Roanoke always has a city council candidate forum. Every two years, we have a city council candidate forum. And because of COVID, I asked the city to help put on a Zoom city council, uh, mayoral council forum. And the city said, no, they couldn't help me. So the issues that are paramount for the neighborhoods and for the citizens were not discussed in November. There was, there was, I know of no forums that, that were held. I know that the Democratic candidates had a forum and, and that people attended, attended that online, then Zoom, that type of thing. But the Democratic Party Committee is only a small part of the population of the city. So November, yes, we had record turnout. We had record voting. And I, I don't know that the voice of the people were heard by those that were being, being, uh, being candidates for mayor and city council. So I, I doubt that we can go back to May. That's not an issue. I, I don't think that's an opportunity. But I do think for those of you that will be running again, for those that want to see city council, city input from the neighbors on what we want in the direction of council, that you make yourselves more available in forums and outreach, um, at, at the time of the election. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Barbara, let me clear something up.
Okay.
I was in the last election for mayor, my second term of election. Uh, with, uh, I ran against, uh, former Mayor David Bowers.
Uh-huh.
We had several forums. We had several issues.
Well, the, the Qantas had, had a forum. I know that. And, and, um, so, so, but I don't know about the city council. I just know that if Qantas is a private, um, not a nonprofit and so wasn't open to everyone.
Well, I, I'm not sure about that, but, uh, there, I was, we had, uh, forums, uh, with groups, forums on the, uh, because of COVID wasn't an issue, had forums, uh, virtual forums, uh, TV. And so I just want to make sure that, because I was a part of it, make sure that I'm clear on that.
I appreciate you clarifying that, that, uh, some other nonprofits that, that are membership-based had, had, um, capability, but many of those I'm not part of. And so, um, I don't know that the neighborhoods and the people in the neighborhood were able to.
And I want to speak to this issue. When you say, when you have over forty-some thousand people to vote and you say the people weren't aware of it, I, I'm, you know, that, that, that to me, I don't think is an accurate statement. Maybe some people didn't get there, but the vast majority of people, this was record numbers that voted. And that's one of the things that, that we moved to do.
I think city council was down ballot. I think that most people were coming out for the top, top of the ticket.
Well, anyway, thank you. We're good to look, I'll look at that. But I just think that that's statement, your statement regarding the people didn't get a chance to deal with that. I, I would, uh, I would take issue with that, but I won't do it today. We'll talk about that later.
I appreciate that and, and, um, I think within two years, we, we have a three, three, four? Twenty-four, I believe. We can, twenty-two, twenty-two, we can look at that. Thank you very much for looking at that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
All right, uh, we're going to close the public hearing now. And, uh, I will ask my colleagues if they have any comments or, uh, issues on this. Mr. Beszic.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I just wanted to, uh, follow up a little bit on the comments that Ms. Andes made, about trying to get more people involved to vote. I'm very proud, first of all, to be a Virginian because I think our Commonwealth has been moving in the opposite direction of a lot of states and proud to be part of this council. But I wanted also to recognize and thank our General Registrar, Mr. Andy Cochran, who has done a fabulous job of organizing these elections, making it much more accessible for people to have options, uh, how they vote. And you may recall that a few years ago, when the General Assembly decided everybody had to have a, a photo ID, Mr. Cochran issued more photo IDs than any other registrar anywhere in the Commonwealth of Virginia for people who might be older and no longer have a driver's license or for whatever reason, uh, didn't have a photo ID. They could get one, uh, through the, uh, through the registrar's office. And I just wanted to be sure we remember to thank him for all his good work in making our elections run so smoothly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you, Mr. Beszic. And I concur in that statement and even further. I'm proud of the state of Commonwealth of Virginia because I'm seeing other states around this country that's making voting more difficult, making it more complex. And Virginia has held this ground in doing that, to have more people to take part in probably what is one of the most important responsibilities that a citizen had. And that's voting. And I, and I'm pleased and proud to say we're not doing some things that other states who've made voting more restrictive. And I think that's important to be said. So I'm proud also of that and the Commonwealth of Virginia. All right, anybody else have any comments? All right. So with that then, uh, Madam Clerk, we'll call the roll on this matter, please.
Vice Mayor White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Beszic.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. Thank you. All right, we're now down to item number six, which is petitions and communications. We have none. All right, reports of the city officers and comments, uh, from, of the city manager. And we have no briefings. And we have, and right now, we're going to proceed with items recommended for action. Seven A one is the acceptance of the FY twenty twenty-one Bulletproof Vests Partnership Grant Award from the United States Department of Justice. There is a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right, uh, Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the FY twenty twenty-one Bulletproof Vests Partnership Grant Award made to the City of Roanoke by the United States Department of Justice and authorizing execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city.
All right, is there any discussion by members of council regarding this item? Hurrying none, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Beszic.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. And we have a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance. Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the federal government, Department of Justice, for the Bulletproof Vests Partnership Grant, amending and reordaining certain sections of the twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two grant fund appropriations and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, is there any discussion by members of council? Hurrying none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Beszic.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. Thank you. Item number two is the acceptance of the FY twenty twenty-one State Homeland Security Program Grant from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management for the police department to purchase equipment to enhance the safety of officers and citizens. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the State Homeland Security FY twenty twenty-one Program Grant established by the Virginia Department of Emergency Management made to the City of Roanoke by the U.S. Department of Homeland Security and authorizing execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city.
All right, any discussion by members of council? Hurrying none, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Beszic.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the, the resolution passes. We now have a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Department of Homeland Security through the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Emergency Management for the State Homeland Security Program Grant, amending and reordaining certain sections of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two grant fund appropriations and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Any questions, discussions? All right, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Beszic.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Item number seven, uh, three, seven eight three is the acceptance of the National Endowment for the Arts, American Rescue Plan Award to contract with artists to develop and publicly show work that advances community wellness, justice, and inclusion. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution. Second.
All right, uh, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the American Rescue Plan Act Grant established by the National Endowment for the Arts to the City of Roanoke and authorizing execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city.
All right, is there any discussion among council members? All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Beszic.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. We have a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, uh, can you read the title paragraph?
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the federal government, National Endowment for the Arts Grant, amending and reordaining certain sections of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two grant fund appropriations and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, is there any discussion by members of council? Hurrying none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Vice Mayor White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Beszic.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the, uh, ordinance passes, budget ordinance passes. Item number seven, four, A, seven eight four is the acceptance of the National Endowment for the Arts Grants, Arts Project Award to hire artists to engage with city staff, stakeholders, and residents in developing and implementing projects that connect the community with goals and strategies. Uh, there's a resolution.
Move the resolution. Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the Grants for Arts Project Grant established by the National Endowment for the Arts to the City of Roanoke and authorizing execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city.
All right, any discussion by members of council?
I just have one question, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Bob, do you know who will be facilitating these grants?
Yeah, those are all done through the Arts Commission.
Arts Commission, okay, that's right.
Doug Jackson will be leading that effort.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Members of council? All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Beszic.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. We have a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance. Second.
Madam Clerk, read the title paragraph, please.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the federal government, National Endowment for the Arts Grant, amending and reordaining certain sections of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two grant fund appropriations and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, uh, is there any discussion by members of council? Any questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Beszic.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. All right, we're down now to seven eight six.
Seven eight five.
Seven eight five? Yes. All right, is the acceptance of the twenty twenty-two Virginia statewide business district resurgence grant in connection with a needs assessment for merchants in the Gainesboro Commercial District. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the twenty twenty-two Virginia statewide Business District Resurgence Grant established by the National League of Cities to the resurgence grant, established by the National League of Cities to the City of Roanoke, and authorizing execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city.
All right, is there any discussion with regards to members of council, any questions?
Well, actually, I'm looking at Bob, Bob looking at me, so.
If you, if you would like, I can give you just a quick overview of what, um, what this is. This is actually the, um, really the second, actually, grant that we've received from the National League of Cities under what's referred to as their Equitable Economic Mobility Initiative Grant. Our Economic Development Department, and Ayesha Johnson is the project manager for this, um, the, the original grant is designed to assist us in other communities. There's a collection of communities across the country that are a part of this, of connecting folks in our community with, um, access to jobs, access to training, um, that connects them to jobs in the community that are, um, of better pay and of better prospects as they go forward. That's the original grant. This is a subset of that grant that focuses specifically on the Gainesboro area and actually is linked into the Gainesboro Hub project, which is a part, of course, of the ARPA funding that you all have designated as well. So those combined are all designed to assist the city in identifying where there are training needs, where there are opportunities for job growth, um, again, in this case, in the Gainesboro area. In the other case, it's, it's a broader area, um, in addition to this, so that's what these two are for. There may be others that we apply for as well to continue to bring additional resources into that area. And I know Ayesha, Ayesha's in the back, if you have any specific questions about the grant itself, so, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Bob, any other comments, questions? Ms. Moon, Reynolds.
Uh, I just, well, excuse me, uh, I'm just, I was reading the, uh, report, and I just had a question. The Gainesboro Commercial District, uh, is it, uh, what does it encompass when you talk about the commercial district?
Yeah, and I'll let, I'll let Ayesha come up, the, um, in the, in the application, we were required to kind of describe an area, and of course, Gainesboro, we tried to be as large an area as they would let us get away with in the application.
Right.
Um, I'll let Ayesha explain what that boundary is.
Good afternoon, thank you. We described the boundary, um, kind of left it a little vague, so it can be flexible, uh, but mostly around the Lawson Building area and Henry Street.
So you're actually looking at, uh, the Martin Luther King Bridge, pedestrian bridge toward the north end of, uh, Orange Avenue, just through the Gainesboro corridor?
Uh, yes, where the business area is, not the residential homes.
Okay, and when you refer to the merchants, which merchants were you referring to in the district?
Those that may currently be operating there, and those that wish to operate there but may not have the resources yet to do so.
And those that are operating there, who are they?
Um, there's some in the Lawson Building currently that I'm aware of. I don't know their names off the top of my head, I can get you a list of them.
So just the ones that's in the Lawson Building, so there's really no merchants actually in the corridor in the Gainesboro Commercial District, other than what you were referring to in the, uh, Lawson Building? There are no other merchants, um, such as, when I thought about it, I was looking at Serenity, for instance, as a business. I was looking at, um, the, um, the Roanoke, um, I guess, the signs, uh, Roanoke, Step and Seal. I was just looking at those type of businesses, so that's why I was just trying to get clarification.
And I think all of the, uh, the industrial park that's there as well would be included in that area, so even though, you know, that's why part of trying to describe it as broadly as we could, to try to figure out what merchants actually would be appropriate in this, it, it's kind of structured for those that are in more of the retail side of things, but not exclusively, so part of it would be trying to figure out exactly what merchants may be a part of this program.
Right, and that's what I was saying, is in case there were some, uh, concerns from the citizens saying, which merchants, what merchants? I was just trying to get some clarification as to that.
Right, ones that may currently exist there, and then ones that, um, desire to.
Yeah, and last was, you referred to a portion of the salary of the $10,000 going toward their salary of the project lead. Uh, who is going to be the project lead?
I'm the project lead, there was a grant match that was required of $10,000, so a portion of my salary is going to be considered the grant match. So I won't be taking from any of the grant money, just a part of my salary will be part of the match, or will be the match.
Right, the $10,000.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, Mr. Jeffrey? So the grant money, I just want to make sure I understand, is that going to roll into the Gainesboro Hub project? Is that what this grant is going to do?
Yeah, this, this is a part of kind of setting sort of the groundwork for the rest of the work that we're talking about doing with the hub.
Okay.
Um, and, and so is that other initiative I mentioned earlier as well, though it's a bigger area than just Gainesboro, but yes, they'll, they'll dovetail together.
Okay.
This is just to conduct a study, and that is, um, with the entity that awarded the grant, they specified what they want us to do with it, and that's to conduct a study, so that's what we have to do with the money.
Okay, thank you. Well, uh, before we go, let me comment on Ayesha and the work you've done, uh, and I followed a little bit when you were doing this, and, uh, it takes a lot of work to do that, and so thank you for your commitment in doing that and following through with this, uh, uh, it's going to make an impact in our community.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. All right, Madam Clerk, are we down to discussions over? She call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Vice Mayor Whiteboyd.
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution, uh, passes. Thank you, Ayesha. All right, uh, a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance, second.
Madam Clerk, read the title paragraph, please.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the National League of Cities Institute for Youth Education and Families for the Equitable Economic Mobility Initiative Grant, amending and re-ordaining certain sections of the 2021/2022 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, any discussion by members of council? Heard none, I'll ask Clerk to call the roll.
Vice Mayor Whiteboyd.
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes, thank you. We're now down to item 7A6, and this is a resolution, do I need to read this, uh, uh, Tim, or?
Uh, just note that, uh, there's a corrected version, there was a scribbler's error, it's brought to our attention by Councilmember Moon Reynolds. We made the change and put the new version in front of you, so council can just go ahead and adopt it, but I wanted to show you that we made that change.
All right, here's the new version, brought to our attention by Councilmember Moon Reynolds, and it's a resolution authorizing the acceptance of the shuttered venue operations grant, established by the Economic Aid to Hard Hit Small Businesses, Nonprofits, and Venues Act, and amended by the American Rescue Plan Act made to the City of Roanoke by the U.S. Small Business Administration's Office of Disaster Assistance, and authorizing execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city. All right, is there any discussion by members of council?
Mayor, if I may, um, I'll just provide again some clarification on this, so this is actually the, uh, third award that we've received under this program. You all are familiar with the first two, and this is directly related to the Burgland Center for its period of closure associated with COVID. This particular award is for $2,017,884.88. The total grant award that we've received so far is slightly over $6 million. Those funds are, um, prescribed as far as their use by, um, the Department of Treasury and the Small Business Administration, so the money has to go into the facility itself, um, and mostly in the form of capital, so that, um, is what we'll be working on as we work our way through. Don't know whether there's additional rounds of this funding, because we didn't expect the last two rounds that we received, um, with it, but it certainly is helping us recover from the losses, um, for the period that the, um, the venue was unable to host, um, events, so, um, certainly appreciative of the Small Business Administration, um, and the Department of Treasury and, and Congress ultimately that approved this, this funding, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Moon Reynolds, you have any further comments in regards to discussion or anything on?
No, sir, I don't, thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, are you ready to call the roll?
Yes, sir. Vice Mayor Whiteboyd.
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. All right, uh, there's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance, second.
Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Economic Aid to Hard Hit Business, Nonprofits, and Venues Act amended by the American Rescue Plan Act, amending and re-ordaining certain sections of the 2021/2022 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, is there any discussion by members of council?
Move the budget ordinance, second.
Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Economic Aid to Hard Hit Business, Nonprofits, and Venues Act amended by the American Rescue Plan Act, amending and re-ordaining certain sections of the 2021/2022 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, is there any discussion by members of council? Seemed none, I'll ask for the roll to be called.
Vice Mayor Whiteboyd.
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. All right, item number seven is the appropriation of the FY 2021/2022 United Way Funding for the Bank of Roanoke Valley Program. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance, second.
Madam Clerk, read the title paragraph, please.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the United Way of the Roanoke Valley to Transition Program Management for Bank on Roanoke Valley to the city to improve the financial stability of low to moderate income residents, amending and re-ordaining certain sections of the 2021/2022 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, any discussion by members of council?
Mayor, if I can again provide just a very brief overview of this one, so you all recall that as we initiated our Financial Empowerment Center, um, it was determined that it was best to consolidate the effort we were also involved in with United Way on the Bank On program. The Bank On program, of course, is to connect residents from the region in, that are bank, unbanked or underbanked into banking, um, checking accounts and so on. Of course, the Financial Empowerment Center, um, is much broader than that in offering no-cost professional, um, financial counseling for all residents of the, of the valley. And at that time, the way that the Bank On program is funded is from the city as well as from, um, financial institutions contributing annually. So what this is, is the, United Way actually is the fiscal agent, so they collect the funds from the, um, financial institutions, and then they pass those on to us, and we actually run the, uh, the program on behalf of United Way alongside our Financial Empowerment Center. So that's what this is, is to facilitate that movement of the, uh, the donations being made by the financial institutions into this program. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion, members of council? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Whiteboyd.
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Madam Clerk, read item number eight.
Yes.
Which is the amendment of the city code to update and clarify the Storm Water Utility Section. There's an, there's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance, second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance amending and re-ordaining section 14.1-3, littering, chapter 14.1, solid waste management, code of the City of Roanoke as amended, establishing an effective date and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right, are there any discussion by members of council? Madam Clerk, do we have people signed up to speak on, on this item, number eight?
Number eight, no, but on number nine, we do.
Okay, I, I just, it's noted on my agenda, there's several speakers. All right, uh, with no member of council having any questions or discussion, uh, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Whiteboyd.
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. All right, I'm going to take a five-minute recess, we'll come back and go to item number nine.
Mayor, there's another measure for 7A8.
There's one other ordinance.
There's another ordinance on 7A8.
And it is a different section, it amends 11.3.
It's two co-amendments.
But they're the same heading.
Yes.
Do I have that?
You should have that. Uh, if it's okay with you, I move that we adopt this ordinance.
He doesn't have it, because I don't have it.
Okay, but there's a second, uh, uh, co-amendment, and I move, uh, the amendment to the second ordinance.
Amendment to 11.3.
Yeah, chapter, yeah, chapter 11.3, stormwater discharge requirements.
Well, ma, let me just say, I don't have that, Madam Clerk, is that, am I missing something?
Well, you may be, but if they are correct, there's a second, um, ordinance to the, to seven or?
To eight.
Eight.
It may have been an oversight, but yes, we do have a second ordinance.
All right, uh, it's been moved, has it been seconded?
Yes, I said it.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance amending and re-ordaining section 11.3, stormwater discharge requirements, code of the City of Roanoke as amended, establishing an effective date and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right, uh, is there any discussion, and, and are we sure no one signed up to speak on this item?
Um.
Because there's some difficulty with the agenda, because on my agenda item, I got several speakers, but if not, uh, Madam Clerk, we call the roll.
Okay, I'll call the roll on this. Vice Mayor Whiteboyd.
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Pardon me?
It's not a budget ordinance, it's just a regular.
Just an ordinance, all right. All right, now, we will take a recess for five minutes.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Reading on other council members to get back?
Yeah.
There you go. All right, we're down, this must have been, okay. We're now down to item number nine, which is the amendment of the city code to enhance sidewalk safety and access in the downtown services district. There is an ordinance.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
All right, I'll ask the clerk to read the title paragraph.
An ordinance amending and re-erdaining section 24-12, camping on public sidewalks and right-of-ways within the downtown service district, chapter 24, public buildings and property generally, Article 1 in general, code of the city of Roanoke, as amended, establishing an effective date and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. Before we get into some discussions, I want to, we have a number of speakers that have signed up, but I want to ask the city manager if he would have some comments on this as we go forward.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I've got a number of items that I want to bring up, and then I also want to update you on kind of where we are from where we were at the briefing that we presented this information to you as we go along. And I ask for your patience because this is fairly lengthy, so I will move through it as expeditiously as I can so that we can move on to hearing from the folks that have come to the meeting this afternoon. The ordinance presented to you this afternoon is designed to respond to one specific issue. You know, this is actually part one of two parts, but this one is designed to address one specific issue and to do so in the narrowest manner practical. That is, to end the practice of sleeping and camping on sidewalks and rights-of-way in downtown. This is in response to requests of residents, business owners, and property owners in downtown who have come before you and spoken here, and who have emailed and called consistently for well over a year seeking your assistance. A number of these same have contacted you to voice their support of the proposed ordinance, and I know you have also received contact from folks who are opposed to the ordinance, and we'll talk about that. I know you'll hear more about that as well. Why is this important? Because downtown is home to hundreds. It represents the most valuable property in the city. It consists of hundreds of millions of dollars in value and is essential to local employment and the economic vitality of the entire region. The city has an obligation to all of its residents to protect and enhance the tax base so that quality services may continue to be provided to everyone in the city. A common concern that has been expressed leading up to consideration of this ordinance is that it does nothing to end homelessness, and that is correct. It is not intended nor designed to do so. Again, the focus is narrow and specific, end sleeping and camping on sidewalks and in right-of-ways in downtown. It should be noted that continuing to allow sleeping and camping on sidewalks in downtown also does nothing to end homelessness and places the individuals sleeping outside and the general public at risk. What will end homelessness is quality educational opportunities, better-paying jobs, a growing economy, and more affordable housing units. All of these are priorities of the city and all have and continue to receive substantial attention and funding. More than 40% of the city's annual budget goes toward education. More than $5 million has been spent on affordable housing in the last three years alone. You have dedicated over $2 million of ARPA funds to connecting the un- and underemployed to training and better-paying jobs, as well as more than $2 million of ARPA funds have been dedicated to additional affordable housing in our community. Additionally, what will end or lessen homelessness is helping those struggling with mental illness or substance use disorders. Again, the city has and continues to dedicate substantial attention and funding to these. Roanoke is the only jurisdiction in the region to fully fund its obligations with Blue Ridge Behavioral. It is the only jurisdiction funding the administration of the collective response to substance use and dedicating portions of its litigation proceeds to ensure its sustainability. Hundreds of thousands of dollars have been provided to the no- and low-cost clinics operating in the area and to the construction of Bradley Free Clinic's mental health services wing that is under construction currently. The city has aggressively pursued through litigation funds from opioid manufacturers and distributors, funds that will be used to help with treatment and recovery in our community. The city has even vigorously defended the rights of those seeking treatment to reside in recovery housing in neighborhoods where they are not welcome. As of today, we'll be defending that in front of the Supreme Court in the state as we go forward. Still, we know that even as we work with our many partners to end homelessness, we must help care for those that are temporarily homeless. Most of the services are provided by partners, many of which you'll hear from today, with the financial support of the city and coordinated through the city's central intake and homeless assistance team. Again, the city has and will continue to dedicate substantial time and funding to these efforts. It is through these efforts that together we have reduced homelessness in our community by more than 50% over the past 10 years, and how we are safely housing the most vulnerable during the COVID recovery. One may disagree with the need for the proposed ordinance or may argue its consequences outweigh its benefits, but it would not be factual to state that the city is not addressing homelessness along with many of its root causes. The discussion today also should not be an indictment on the rescue mission and its operations. In 2020, the mission offered over 62,000 nights of safe shelter, served over 132,000 meals, assisted over 9,400 patients in their clinic, and provided nearly 2,000 case management visits. The mission, along with our other shelters and service providers, offer temporary services vital to ending homelessness, and this community is very fortunate for their presence and their dedication. It should be obvious that homelessness is not a simple issue, and actions, including the proposed ordinance, are not without consequences. We are aware of this. Unaddressed camping downtown will cause residents to leave downtown, patrons to take their business elsewhere, and visitors to choose alternate destinations. This will result in less economic activity, the closure of locally-owned small businesses, and the associated job loss and tax revenues, revenues which are necessary to provide all of those services that I just noted earlier, addressing homelessness, its causes, and resolutions. Implementing the ordinance will likely send those currently sleeping downtown elsewhere, preferably to a shelter, but likely to locations outside of downtown where we will need to address the issue with the tools that we have currently available. Again, we've not stated otherwise this. We know that this is not a solution to homelessness or those that are sleeping outside. Though we intend on doing all we can to avoid it, in some instances, those refusing to comply with the ordinance may be fined. There'll be a conversation, I'm sure, about why the fine. The fine comes with the authorization that the state gives us to regulate. That's what comes with the ordinance itself as well. Fortunately, this has not been the case with similar ordinance we've had in place for years in our parks and greenways. One cannot camp or sleep in our parks or greenways, and that has been an ordinance in place with the exact same penalties that we're talking about here today for a number of years. As far as I know, we have never actually levied a single fine in any of those instances. It is for these reasons that our efforts focus on compliance and are led through a non-police outreach, connecting individuals to services rather than law enforcement where at all possible. The issue is complex, and it is not an either-or issue. Rather, it is a both-and issue. It is wrong to characterize it as either we help the homeless or have a vibrant downtown. Rather, it is that we both have a strong downtown, which includes the proposed ordinance, and we help those experiencing homelessness through the many partnerships and actions presented previously. Staff continues to recommend approval of the ordinance as presented, and that the city continues its multifaceted response to homelessness and its many causes. Following the last briefing, I indicated we would be engaging with a couple of stakeholder groups as well as undertaking additional outreach efforts. This included a meeting hosted by DRI consisting of downtown residents, business owners, and property owners. More than 50 were in attendance, and nearly all supported approval of the ordinance as presented, and I know some of them will be speaking today as well. A second stakeholder meeting was conducted with homeless service providers. A number of questions were presented. We gave the best answers we could to those, and there were concerns raised and discussed. All present acknowledged the need to address downtown camping, as it was neither ideal for the individuals sleeping outside or for the downtown. Additional engagement included conversations with the rescue mission, as well as our own Hat outreach workers, as well as an evening visit with the folks that are currently camping at the Church Street Garage to hear directly from them some of the concerns associated with the ordinance, as well as the issues that they confront currently. These efforts, of course, have been accompanied by ongoing education and outreach by Hat, as well as law enforcement as we have worked our way up to this point, and if approved, will continue beyond this point, obviously. Many of the folks we and you have heard from are here tonight and will offer additional considerations, and we, of course, are available to answer any questions that you may have. And there are other staff members here, including Matt Crookshank with the Hat team, and of course, others that will be able to answer any other specific questions that you might have as well. But just wanted to give you kind of that context as we move into the public meeting portion of this, and then we'll be available to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob, and that's the kind of information we wanted, and as we go through this, I hope people will remember the thing that you mentioned in your address. All right, we have about 20, a little more, about 24 speakers that have signed up. So we're going to give everybody a chance to talk, and you've got three minutes. Now, when that horn goes off, that ends it. So make sure you have your address or your words up in three minutes. You've got to get it in in three minutes because of the vast number of people that we have that's going to speak. And I'm going to ask our clerk to call your name. Those who signed up to speak, she'll call your name, and you can come up, and if she chooses to call two or three, you can line up. All right? So with that, Madam Clerk, can you start the?
Yes, sir, I will. Our first speaker is Gilbert Collins, and following Mr. Collins, Don Sandoval, Sandoval, Sandoval.
Sandoval.
Sandoval, and Lee Wilhelm. Okay, Mr. Collins.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmembers. Why are people homeless? I'm sure you know why, but I wanted to add that approximately 16% of the single adult homeless population suffers from some form of severe and persistent mental illness. Some suffer from addictions. Let me quote Dr. George Kuhn from the National Health Institute. "A common misconception is addiction is a choice or moral problem, and all you have to do is stop, but nothing could be further from the truth." And the APA states that addiction is a chronic disorder with biological, psychological, social, and environmental factors influencing its development and maintenance. Addictions are prevalent in Roanoke. As the Roanoke Times reported, there are more than 30,000 people suffering from addiction in Roanoke Valley this past September. There is the Roanoke Valley Collective Response that created a plan called Blueprint for Action, a community-driven plan to abate the addiction crisis. The Bradley Free Clinic is part of that plan, offering addiction services. It is a two-year plan that started September 2020. We need to allow this plan to continue to help people addicted living on the streets. I went down and talked to some of them. They were both men and women. They said they will not have a safe place to stay. I noticed they were moving by 7:00 a.m. If arrested, they would have to stay in jail, as they would not have any income to pay fines or court costs, thus putting the burden of care on the city instead of offering them care where they are. I also believe it will violate their Eighth Amendment rights of the Constitution. Even Captain Polley of the Police Department said homeless noise is not illegal. I moved to Roanoke in 2007, believing it cared about all citizens, not just the rich and elite. You're going to punish those that are most vulnerable and need the care the clinic can provide. I'll tell you why some people don't want to stay at the rescue mission and the other ones, is because they force you into Christianity, no matter what your religious beliefs are or aren't. I ask you not to ban homelessness while the programs available can be implemented more. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor White Boyd, respected city council members and staff. I first want to acknowledge that I understand fully why our downtown business owners are opposed to our unsheltered friends camping on the streets in front of their businesses or sleeping in their doorways. However, I would also like to acknowledge that this issue has made it very clear that there must be alternative locations created where these human beings, who also happen to be citizens of this great valley, are permitted to exist. Criminal charges and fines that people experiencing homelessness can't afford to pay only create additional barriers to employment and housing. Criminalizing homelessness, a condition that many do not have the resources to escape, possibly due to cognitive abilities or other issues in order to overcome, is not a compassionate approach. A criminal act is generally a decision, the willful choice to do something that's against the law. No one wakes up and chooses to be homeless, and if there are no choices as to where one can exist, what does one do? What are the options? Well, maybe the answer is a well-managed permissible camping area, maybe a tiny house village model, maybe an old motel or a building that can be renovated into transitional living space. We truly need new and innovative ways to approach this social issue. There's a myriad of reasons that bring individuals to a place of homelessness, and the harsh reality is that many are experiencing homelessness due to severe mental illness or substance abuse. Contrary to the belief of many, there is zero inpatient options, inpatient treatment options for those struggling with addiction at this moment. Couple that with the lack of basic life skills, and it becomes inappropriate and even unsafe to place these individuals in housing. So what will we do with this portion of the population? Where shall they exist? Do we ignore the glaring risks of housing them in order to get them out of the public eye? In a recent letter from the city manager, it was mentioned that there are plenty of shelter beds for all of our unsheltered friends. The letter reported that there are 44 people found to be sleeping outside. However, just a quick review of our ministry sign-in sheets, we located 70 separate unsheltered individuals that we've served in the last two months. Our mission, if I'm correct, is currently allowing nine men and three women into their cold shelter. For the last few weeks, they've not been able to accept any women or families due to COVID exposure, so those women have had no access to housing. There are zero beds available at the trust house. I would also like to speak to the manager's letter citing the Martin versus Boise case stating that sleeping on our local sidewalks can be enforced only when an individual has access to an emergency shelter. Otherwise, they can't be cited. Because of COVID, our shelter has had to close down on several instances because of COVID exposure. This leaves our homeless and vulnerable with nowhere to go, not even emergency shelter.
Mayor Lee and City Council, I appreciate the opportunity to stand before you. I think I know most of you, and most of you know me. I've spent about 40 years in this city. I'm a lifelong resident. I've spent the last 40 years since I came back from college working with nonprofits, a great number of who helped the unprivileged. And I will say, I know the reasons. Don't fit everybody, and nobody fits the exact mold. But I do know that there are programs out there that can help people if they want help. That's the key word. If they want help. Doesn't mean a handout. It means help to be able to take care of themselves. And that is available out there. There are training programs. Everybody's looking for workers, so don't come around and say, "I can't get a job." Look around at all the even lower-level jobs that don't take a lot of training. They're not being filled. So there are places that will train people and will put them to work, but they've got to want it. I can say that the majority of the people that stay out of the shelter stay out for a reason. And you're going to hear from my friend Lee Clark here shortly, and I think he'll debunk some of what they've said about the rescue mission. Also, I do know some of the serious implications that this is going to make happen. Just look out west. Look at San Francisco and some of the big cities. Tourists don't go there anymore. You can't even go downtown for stepping over people, seriously. Do we want to become that? You know, we have worked hard in this community to build a vibrant downtown. And when I was in that meeting two weeks ago, I listened to the business owners in Roanoke, and they're scared. And I don't blame them, because it doesn't take much today to keep people from coming downtown. And there are over 200,000 people in this area that consider Roanoke their downtown. And we provide a lot of services, and we have a lot of businesses that require these people to come in and buy their goods. But the other thing that has jumped tremendously in the last 10 years has been tourism. And with our city getting better... with our city getting better, you all have seen the money from tourism just go straight up. That money goes to our schools. The meals taxed us, the bed tax does. So if we could take a hit with people not coming here visiting, you're going to take a double hit on the revenues that you get from the downtown businesses and people coming to use our hotels and restaurants. I hope that you all will approve of this ordinance. Thank you.
The next three speakers, Edward Mitchell, Tom Foster, and Joshua Haley.
I don't see Edward Mitchell. I'll rest this here.
Good afternoon. My name is Joshua Haley, and I'm a combat veteran, and I suffer from PTSD. I'm often plagued with nightmares that can be triggered by noise and crowds. Prior to May of this year, I made my home on the sidewalk of Church Avenue. In May, I was fortunate enough to be housed by the least of these ministries. I was an active client of the homeless assistance team. However, I was put on their waiting list for a housing voucher while others that came after me were helped first. I tried to be a resident of the mission, but since I wasn't in agreeance of allowing to give them seventy-five percent of my income, I wasn't welcomed there either. The vote to adopt this proposed ordinance removes access to a place to rest for many whom have absolutely nowhere else to go, exist. The ordinance makes reference to the safety of those frequenting the downtown district. However, there is no mention of the safety of those that are suffering with homelessness. I remember several instances when my homeless friends became prey as they slept unguarded on the sidewalks, awaking to the sound of someone trying to take little belongings they did have, or take their shoes just for a joke so they wouldn't have them when they got up the next cold morning. For someone with PTSD diagnosis, the shelter is not an option. It is a disservice to paint homelessness with such a broad brush that our city leaders would buy the lie that a shelter environment is the answer for every homeless individual, even in the short term. There is a dire need for alternative options that people without shelter are allowed to exist. I would implore you to thoroughly review the resources that are currently available to Roanoke's homeless population, investigate how the agencies administer those services. In theory, it sounds much simpler than it is. Thank you.
Next three speakers, Rick Parish, James Bullington, and Dr. Samantha Rosenthal.
Hello. My name is Dr. Samantha Rosenthal. I'm a history professor at Roanoke College, but I speak just on behalf of myself. I've written a book about the history of Roanoke. It's coming out tomorrow, so I hope you'll check it out. A peer-reviewed academic book in which I talk about the fight of marginalized groups in this city over the past hundred years to try to make spaces of belonging here. In my book, I write about efforts by city leaders for the past hundred years to try to, quote, "clean up downtown." And you can read it to see what I've found about the nineteen seventies, eighties, nineties, two thousands, twenty-tens, all in my book, about efforts to try to clean up the market area, try to push sex workers out of downtown, try to push other people with behaviors that are deemed as unacceptable out of downtown. The result of these efforts for generations has been pushing people into less safe parts of the city, making people more vulnerable to danger. And this is the continuum upon which this ordinance continues, and it's presenting a great danger to the very people who need the most protection. Besides the historical perspective, I also want to point out that the arguments about access to the sidewalks that are framed as, you know, an access issue, every time I see those dang scooters on the sidewalks, and my friend said, "Don't bring up the scooters," but look, somebody's sleeping on the sidewalk is no more impediment to someone with access issues than the scooters. And here you are considering criminalizing humans who are sleeping on our sidewalks. So the access issue that the city manager brought up, I think, is bunk. I also just think that we're living through a moment now with a national conversation about alternatives to policing, right? Ever since the murder of George Floyd, we've had that conversation, and especially when we talk about responding to mental illness issues. Are there ways to not send police out, but to send out other kinds of services? And the city manager mentions that this is a non-police approach, but the actual ordinance that you're voting on is a criminal justice one. It gives the police power to arrest and to find people, and that's not the kind of approach that we should take to people who are experiencing poverty and experiencing vulnerability and experiencing mental illness. So lastly, I just want to reiterate what some other people said, which is that I would ask y'all to respect the autonomy of people to make choices for themselves about what is safest. Instead of y'all taking the position that you know what's right for people, respect that some people will feel safest to live on the street and will not feel safe going into the shelters, and we should not be putting them in jail either. Thank you.
Good afternoon, City Council, Mayor Lee. My name is Matt Bullington, 3230 Orchard Hill Road. I own and operate the Texas Tavern. We've been in downtown for ninety-two years almost, and I'm here to ask for your support for the sidewalk proposal. First off, lest anyone accuse any of us who are in support of it of being anti-homeless, nothing could be further from the truth. The Texas Tavern, by definition, is a place where you're sitting at the counter, you're very likely to have a judge on one side and somebody down in their lock on the other side. It's a melting pot. We embrace that. It's a wonderful aspect of it. That's never going to change. I also understand that at heart is addiction and substance abuse, and with homelessness. I know that I'm empathetic and sympathetic to that, and over my twenty-five years in the business, plus, I have counseled and helped people in their struggles with sobriety. So it's something that's near and dear to my heart, and I understand these folks are going through that. So none of us are anti-homeless. I mean, that's just, nothing could be further from the truth. I remember back in the nineteen seventies when we'd go downtown, though, and it was a far different place than ten years ago, five years ago. I was a kid, and we'd be driving around, and it wasn't necessarily a place you wanted to bring a family down to. It was kind of wild. That did change. It absolutely has. I love downtown. I love the city of Roanoke. I want to be part of it. I love running my business. I've always have, and I feel privileged. I really do. More and more recently, I get constantly asked by people, "What's going on downtown?" Tell me of a story of something where they had a very unsavory or unfortunate incident that happened. I just kind of look at them and say, you know, I think they're working on it. The police department's beleaguered. There's things going on. We're trying. We're trying. We're trying. But I get hit, and I know a lot of other business owners feel those questions, and other people, residents feel those a lot. Something has kind of changed, and not for the better. I've witnessed every single day for the past couple of years what happens when you do have a group living across the street, and God bless the poor people. I don't, I'm not trying to malign them, but what happens when people don't live in a house, and they do all the normal things that you do in your house, the good, the bad, and the ugly, right there. And it's disruptive to all businesses in downtown. It's disruptive to people living downtown and trying to come downtown. I don't think, I think we can have a humane approach to where we're not maligning folks, but we're also helping business owners. We need that. I ask of you. We really do. We need to have some minimum standards. I don't think it's too much to ask in society that we do have some of these minimum standards, where we're having clean sidewalks, that people aren't being harassed, and that we're also trying to be humane and help out those that are most unfortunate. The city ordinance that's in place, I know that, I don't think people have been cited, so this is an extension of that. So what's working, or what status quo is not working right now, and I just ask for your support.
Our next speakers, John Wiley, Anne Marie Green, and Lauren Cannery.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Appreciate the opportunity to have to speak up here. I think I was one of the short people the lady referred to earlier on the greenway. Excuse me. My name's John Wiley. I live on the Hundred Block of Norfolk Ave Southwest, over near the Transportation Museum. I'd like to express my support in favor of the sidewalk safety ordinance. I moved to the Roanoke Valley back in 2017 from Philadelphia. I started in Salem, but decided I wanted to move to downtown Roanoke. Since going to college, I've always lived in big cities, Boston, DC, New York, last of which was Philadelphia. I enjoy myself. I enjoy the city vibe, and I saw a lot of potential in Roanoke. But at the time, I was moving out of Salem and choosing to live in Roanoke, I was surprised by the number of friends and coworkers and associates from the area who questioned my judgment. "Roanoke isn't safe," they said. "Do I pay attention to the news or not?" they questioned. I'd lived in big cities before. I figured I could handle what Roanoke had to offer. I didn't do any research. Roanoke just struck me as a town poised to hit its renaissance, like so many other smaller towns over the past fifteen years in this region and in the Appalachian Valley. Housing was available downtown. It seemed safe enough for me, so I jumped in. Fast forward three years, and one pandemic later, Roanoke's recovering, but the pandemic's hurt. For several months this summer, my neighbors and I had a small tent town set up under the Second Street Bridge. I'll spare these sort of details that the gentleman earlier had referred to, also having experience, things you shouldn't have to experience as an adult with children. You've likely seen the pictures and videos. My neighbors have presented them previously, somewhere as public as Facebook. We talked with anyone who would listen, HAT, the police, and other entities. The situation was unsafe and unsanitary. The perception of Roanoke is not going to be helped by the images and the pictures from these events, and the perception people are going to have coming into the city and vote. Some of the things you said earlier, I'm very happy to hear the city's doing so much, because this isn't about being anti-homeless. This is about being pro-Roanoke. The business owners who invest in downtown, they need customers. We need people coming to the city. Investors that are creating living spaces that are opening up downtown need renters. Homeowners and renters need to feel safe in the streets where they have committed themselves to. We need the greater Roanoke Valley to see Roanoke as a destination. We need and want the city to thrive. A thriving Roanoke is a city that can better help the citizens in need, the citizens that people obviously here on both sides of this issue want to help. Downtown Roanoke has so much potential of being even more vibrant urban center, providing safe, clear sidewalks, and that's inclusive of the scooters. It is for its inhabitants and visitors is crucial for the city's recovery and future. It's not an anti-homeless position that I'm taking. It's a pro-Roanoke decision. I want to be a part of this community for the rest of my life. I've moved down here from the north. It's a very different experience. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, my name is Anne Marie Green, and I'm the president of the Council of Community Services. The council manages the homeless management information system that's used by the Continuum of Care, and we also operate the Community Housing Resource Center. However, today I'm here representing the Blue Ridge Interagency Council on Homelessness, or BRIC, which provides oversight to the Continuum of Care. Paula Prince, who chairs BRIC, couldn't be here today. BRIC understands the concerns of the businesses and residents of downtown Roanoke. However, the ordinance which you are considering today addresses a symptom of the problem of homelessness. It does nothing to address the underlying problems that have people living on the streets. We have a great deal of data about the homeless population here in the city of Roanoke in HMIS. For example, since January of twenty-nine, there have been thirty-five thousand two hundred and sixty individuals served by the Continuum of Care. Of the people in Roanoke who are homeless, thirty-seven of them, thirty-seven percent of them struggle with a substance abuse disorder, while forty-five percent of them have a mental illness. Four out of ten are female. The HAT team has served seven hundred and eighty-seven people during that time, while the rescue mission, our largest shelter, has had three thousand four hundred and thirty-nine individual clients. That's in less than two years. There are often reasons that homeless people choose to live on the street rather than in a shelter. For example, there may be drug or alcohol testing requirements at the shelter which they won't be able to pass. They may have a pet. They may be afraid of theft or violence based on previous experiences. They may be banned from a shelter for behavior issues. There is nowhere to store their belongings. The mental health, substance abuse, or trauma issues which I mentioned before can play a part. And on any given night, there may not be a bed available for whatever reason. Of more importance, though, is why these people may resist help or become homeless repeatedly. BRIC supports the following solutions. Increase your HAT team resources. Continue support for low-barrier shelters. A community-wide investment in low- or moderate-income housing. Coordinated efforts to close the substance abuse and mental health service gap. Provide long-term housing and stability services so we have permanent supportive housing to keep people in their houses. Use our quality data that we have to underpin a strategic planning process for services and housing that includes all community stakeholders. I want to thank the city manager for his stakeholder groups. I want to thank the city. You've been very generous this year in the amount of money which you have given out to help address this problem. BRIC and the Council of Community Services will help in any way that we can, but there are some solutions to the underlying problem. Thank you.
Hello, councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. My name is Lauren Cannery. I'm a medical student here, but my views are my own. I'm formerly an infectious disease epidemiologist, and I've helped over twenty jurisdictions in this country address public health concerns associated with homelessness. And I can tell you that criminalization is not the answer. The more that you invest in housing, the more you'll get back in your return in terms of your public health programs. I'm excited to see Vice Mayor White Boyd here. I actually got to meet you on election day last year. It was my first time voting here in Roanoke as a new resident and a new homeowner, and I was really excited to talk to you about your Housing First platform. And that's housing first, not fines first, not jail first. It's housing first. And I was excited to have Mr. Best pitch on our council as a social worker and the code of ethics around respect for persons and social justice. I've spoken to Mr. Cobb about the need for LGBTQ inclusivity in our housing arrangements here, and we're in dire need of housing, especially for transgender individuals in our community. And I think it's absolutely unethical to find individuals who have no other options that are safe and affirming for them. I'm at the hospital. I've met a few folks. I've noticed some trends, and my hope was that today we could use all of the energy in this room and all the amazing brains in this room and experiences to address some real questions, especially for our city manager. So I've met patients who identify as LGBTQ, and they've told me of discrimination they've faced when trying to find a place to sleep at our religiously affiliated shelters. So my question for you, Mr. City Manager, is why don't we have LGBTQ-friendly transitional housing in our city? I've also met patients with substance abuse disorder who are effectively banned from all the housing programs here that require sobriety. So my question for you, City Manager, with all the money we're getting from that pharma lawsuit, why don't we have any housing programs for people that use drugs? You know, it's a lot easier to reach recovery if you have a place to sleep at night. And finally, I've met individuals who've been off their HIV medications for months on end. They're selling their food stamps. They're experiencing sexual assault. They're going hungry, and they're doing anything that they can to get a little bit of cash to afford a night at a hotel. And I just don't understand why we don't have housing vouchers for them. So I ask of you as our public servants, as progressive leaders, to use this energy and enthusiasm in the room today to come up with real, sustainable solutions, not a Band-Aid measure that's going to throw people away like trash, sweeping them off our streets. All of our neighbors, our neighbors are all humans. One of the reasons I loved moving to Roanoke was not only because of businesses, but also the individuals who live downtown, and I think that we can find some better solutions for our neighbors. So thank you for your time.
Our next speakers, Dani Clausen, Eric Sakal, and Keisha Preston.
Good afternoon. My name is Dani Clausen. I am the executive director of the Virginia Harm Reduction Coalition. Sixty percent of our clients are chronically homeless, and so I felt obligated to come and speak on this issue today. The simple fact of the matter is there is not sufficient housing for LGBTQ communities and people who use drugs in this city. While the Salvation Army, domestic violence shelter, and the rescue mission do great work, it is not an option for LGBTQ people, and it's their right to deny that as a work, it is not an option for LGBTQ people, and it's their right to deny that as a private institution. But the fact of the matter is, is when you say that there's plenty of housing in this city for all homeless people, that's just simply not true. We've had reports of clients that have tried to access the Rescue Mission, a trans woman reported that she had to sleep on the kitchen floor because they didn't have appropriate housing for her at the Rescue Mission. And this is a big issue, especially for LGBTQ people, because 17% of LGBTQ people experience homelessness in their lifetime. That is double the general population average. And just in the last year alone, 8% of trans folk have reported experiencing homelessness in the past year. This is according to a 2020 Williams Institute report. So this is, you know, saying that, oh, it's just one or two people, that's actually not the case. LGBTQ people are much more likely to be homeless, and much more likely to be impacted by this issue. Also, as Ms. Canary said, the fact of the matter is, is that people who use drugs don't have access to many of the housing resources here, and all the data shows that if you give people a stable place to sleep, a safe place to sleep, they are then much more likely to seek recovery. For some people, it works that recovery first, then housing, but for other people, we need more options for them, we need housing first and then recovery. Mr. McCowell and Mr. Spencer have said over and over again that there is enough housing, but saying something over and over again doesn't make it true. And with all respect, saying we already have an unjust law with regard to our Greenway spaces and our green spaces is not a good reason to pass more unjust laws. In summary, the Housing First model that so many of you support here on this council does not mean housing first for straight and sober people only. It means housing first for everyone. This ordinance will open up the city to a costly civil rights lawsuit, and regardless of the ruling, whether we win or not, that lawsuit will be moneyed down the drain. Considering all this, it is unconscionable to criminalize the homeless in this city, and it will lead to criminalization, because once you get one, two, three tickets, you get a warrant for your arrest and you go to jail, and that absolutely is not what we need here. So I urge you, urge you to vote no on this measure.[751.01][751.01][applause]
Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Whiteboy, City Council members, and city staff appreciate the opportunity to be here. Eric Sishaw talking on behalf, speaking on behalf of the Roanoke Regional Chamber of Commerce, the largest business organization in western Virginia with its office right here in downtown. We're asking for your help today in support of the proposed sidewalk camping ordinance. The purpose of this ordinance is to assist people for support, helping them find temporary indoor housing and goals towards permanent shelter and addressing their needs. It is not a crime to take action to assist our homeless citizens to find suitable shelter. Indeed, it is compassionate. As most of you know, Joyce Waugh, our President and CEO, is on the city's compassionate Roanoke initiative. To do nothing, pass no ordinance, and simply hope for things to get better will likely result in more of the same. Our request today is that you join us in supporting the proposed sidewalk camping ordinance. If homelessness were an easy issue to address, it would have been addressed already. It is complicated. This ordinance is a formal way to begin addressing the need by getting our homeless individuals and citizens into shelters to help address more than just the issue we see on the sidewalk, including health and safety for our small business owners, customers, residents in downtown and beyond. Sadly, we've heard from another number of residents and business owners in our region that they no longer feel safe coming downtown, as well as their employees coming into downtown for work and play. And the perception may be hard to change that, even if and when the sidewalk camping situation is reduced, yet we must try. Of course, we know the situation has clearly been exasperated by COVID-19 over the past 18 to 20 months, and we've seen the prevalence of the sidewalk camping increase. We've learned that individuals have been harassed by unsheltered people, it's been challenging to walk down the sidewalk due to obstructions of folks sleeping there. Small businesses have added the difficulty of attracting customers, specifically around the City Market Building, who are frightened to shop or dine in downtown, and we have seen the unsanitary efforts of no restrooms on or near the sidewalks. Downtown Roanoke is the heart of our region, and we all know that. We must find a balance in our community, a balance in which our homeless citizens have safe shelter and access to additional services, and one in which small businesses can operate fully and safely, and where people want to come for business, shopping, recreation, and entertainment. Clearly, it's a community challenge, and one that we all must be a part of the long-term solutions, all of us. Similar ordinances are already working well across our city, and this new action is part of a larger, more comprehensive strategy to thoughtfully transition the unsheltered population to temporary and permanent housing. Lawfully removing individuals from unsafe locations will open doors and opportunities for long-term assistance. We ask you to please stand with the community on this issue and take action by supporting this ordinance. Thank you.[933.61][933.61][applause]
I'm Keisha Preston, and I just want to start by saying that I think we absolutely have a responsibility to get people off of the sidewalks, because they're human beings and it is our beds, but I don't think that criminalizing them is the answer. And I think that before any decisions are made today, everyone in this room needs to be brutally honest and acknowledge that this ordinance has absolutely nothing to do with wanting to help people on the streets, nor does it have anything to do with sidewalk safety. This ordinance did not spring up from a desire to help people who are having a hard time, it was literally crafted in response to people complaining about urine, begging, and poor people creating an eyesore. And if sidewalk safety were the issue, we'd be talking about Lime scooters today as well, given that they create the exact same mobility hazards for people in wheelchairs and the blind when they get left laying all over the sidewalks. Real help usually doesn't involve threatening people with jail time or fines when you already know they can't afford to pay them, as a scare tactic to make them do something they've clearly opposed to doing. Remember that people didn't comply with the No Camping in Parks ordinance by going to shelters, they complied by relocating to the sidewalks. If shelter beds are available and people are choosing the sidewalks instead, logic tells me there's a reason for that, and we should probably explore it. Had any of these people on the streets been brought to the table as stakeholders, they could have elaborated on their reasons for themselves. However, based on the information that's been made available to the public, it looks like very few of them actually were given that opportunity. Based on the information that's been released to the public, it appears the stakeholders were the business owners, the downtown residents, and a handful of nonprofit leaders. I think it's safe to conclude that those are the demographic of people we're actually trying to accommodate, not the people on the streets. For people in recovery, shelter environments can create a perfect storm for a relapse. When you're in close quarters with other people and have no control over who else might be there, seeing familiar faces or recognizable behaviors can quickly trigger memories and send a person into relapse. I know city officials believe they've done a good job crafting this ordinance in such a way that it would withstand legal challenges faced by similar ordinances in other localities, I'm less confident, as I strongly believe forcing a person to choose between jail, fines, and possible relapse, regardless of how many shelter beds are available, would make a very strong case for cruel and unusual punishment. I've got a strong feeling that the courts would agree, but do we really want to waste money on lawsuits finding out? From comments about refugees, to January 6, to college policies surrounding non-binary students, Roanoke has been in national news quite a bit for all of the wrong reasons. We're earning a reputation for ourselves on a national stage as a city that's inhospitable to its residents, and should you vote yes, we will likely wind up in national spotlight once again. That type of negative, constant press is far more harmful to business and tourism than people on the sidewalks could ever be. You can't claim to care about equity and simultaneously vote yes to an ordinance like this. We are better than this, and I'm urging all of you to find more compassionate solutions and vote no to the sidewalk camping ordinance. Thank you.[1107.33][1107.33][applause]
Our next speakers, Ben James, Tina Workman, and Stephanie Phoenix Keese.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lee and members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today on the proposed No Camping Ordinance on Sidewalks and Public Rite-A-Ways within the downtown district. I'm Tina Workman, and I'm President of Downtown Roanoke Incorporated. As the downtown organization, our mission is to make downtown Roanoke the preferred place to live, work, and play. With over 15,000 downtown employees, nearly 3,000 residents, 2,500 students, and hundreds of thousands of visitors each year, downtown Roanoke is the heart of the Roanoke Valley, and its vitality is key to maintaining a healthy and strong region. A vibrant downtown helps retain residents, businesses, jobs, investments, and visitors who bring necessary revenue to our city. Homelessness in our city is a complex issue, and we share the concerns of many. Yet we also urge you to recognize and address the significant health and safety dangers being imposed daily to Roanoke's small business community, its patrons, downtown residents and employees, as well as visitors. Over the past 18 months, we've heard from numerous downtown businesses that have experienced declines in traffic to their businesses, and reports from their customers who feel they are no longer safe to shop and dine in downtown. We regularly hear from downtown employees expressing concern about getting to and from work safely, and the resulting impact these issues have had on their ability to conduct business on a daily basis. We frequently receive emails, calls, and social media messages from downtown visitors and residents regarding these same issues. My staff and I have personally witnessed and experienced incidents of defecation, urination, and physical assaults on our sidewalks and public spaces. DRI's Board of Directors and staff strongly support the proposed sidewalk ordinance that seeks to protect the rights and safety of downtown businesses, their patrons, employees, and residents. As you know, similar ordinances are already in effect and working well across our city. Extending the ordinance to downtown sidewalks will not only ensure the rights and safety of people who live and work downtown, but also incentivize the adoption of the many transitional housing options available which are currently underutilized. Downtown Roanoke Inc. and our Board of Directors encourage Roanoke City Council to take action to address the concerns of the business community, or risk the loss of businesses as they seek safer, more healthy alternate locations. Thank you for your time and consideration.[1298.01][1298.01][applause]
Maps are hard to navigate.
Hi, my name is Phoenix Keese, and I am a prior resident of Roanoke Rescue Mission and local survivor and resident of Roanoke City of homelessness. I understand that you're attempting to address a public health and safety issue by proposing this ordinance, which would force those affected to seek services from the shelter, which would be an effective strategy if the local shelter were feasible. Most of us are familiar with domestic violence, which is controlling, restricting, or seizing of someone's finances, controlling or restricting someone's ability to move freely to and from their residents, punishing a person who has exposed abuse, forcing a person to participate in a religion, restricting someone from practicing the religion of their choice, and using religion to manipulate. When you come from a background of trauma, anything resembling these can be traumatizing. For example, in the past, a local shelter imposed a contract forcing each resident to surrender 75% of their income, controlling how they spend it. They don't make provision for other religions and require their staff to be living a Christian life in order to work there, preventing religious freedom in the shelter. The substance use program doesn't allow you access to your electronics nor contact with the outside world except via one lobby phone. When in modified side, as opposed to family side, you lose basic rights, comforts, and your belongings. Residents must remain outdoors during the day, and Roanoke does not have adequate day shelters. The process of loss and crisis during homelessness is traumatic. Utilizing existing resources to stabilize and reintegrate these community members will improve public health, contribute to the economy, and address the crisis. TAP has a land bank that can be utilized to create affordable, long-term housing for this population, and according to the National Law Center for Homelessness and Poverty, the federal Title V program authorized under the McKenney-Vito Homelessness Act, Assistance Act, grants states, local governments, and 501(c) nonprofits with the right of first refusal for free federal surplus property for homeless housing and services, which have provided access to approximately 500 buildings on nearly 900 acres of land in 30 states. It's wise to table this decision until we can research localities that have successfully executed strategies that avoid criminalization and establish a task force that includes survivors of homelessness. Love your neighbors and yourself, City Council, and by the way, you have access to that Title V program, and you could choose to move to act on it. I know that you have access to land that you get a hold of, you have the right of first refusal, and first refusal means that that property would go to the city before it is up on the retail residential market for anyone else. If we seize this, we can create housing, there's no excuse.[1456.83][1456.83][applause]
Our next speakers, Robert Jaeger, Alicia Smith, Swayed Best.
I'm a business owner and past Chair of DRI. I'm here today to ask you to pass the proposed ordinance, because I believe that every person that is part of downtown deserves a clean, safe, and friendly environment in which to work, live, dine, shop, and play. I'd also like to ask you to consider additional funding for the HAT team and related, sorry, I can't speak today, related services that address houselessness specifically. Thank you for your hard work, dedication, and commitment to our entire community. Thank you.[1521.33][1521.33][applause]
Hi, I'm Swayed Best. I've been a Roanoke resident for 26 years, been spending a lot of downtown, time downtown since I was 14. I currently work downtown, but I'm just here as myself, not here to represent the business I work at. I've been in contact with a lot of the homeless people downtown since I started hanging out down here, and also since I've been working down here, and I don't approve of the ordinance, but I have a feeling it's going to get passed anyways, and so I'd just like to point out some of the, and reiterate some of the flaws of the area, like where people are going to be staying, specifically the mission. Most of the, many of the people who work at the mission are laypeople who have gone through the mission's drug rehabilitation program. These people lack professional training in regards to working with men and women suffering from either mental health issues or addiction. Additionally, many of the workers know the homeless community from outside the mission when they were using drugs. This causes stress and rudeness in the best of situations, and actual danger in the worst. Others feel treated disrespectfully and cruelly by the staff, and others have mentioned that they feel unsafe there. Others have also mentioned that the food at the mission is often, if it's not finished, frozen, and then thawed until all the food is gone. This leads to the gastrointestinal distress people have been talking about, which is only compounded by the fact that there are only two places in downtown Roanoke that the homeless community has, like, complete access to, restrooms. It's the Market Building, which is not always open, and the library, which is not always open, which is why you have people using the bathroom on the streets, because there's nowhere else to go. There are also complaints about the mission hours, the severity of mission bans, and the lack of flexibility in coming and going through the missions for the people who are staying there. Which is not to say that the mission is like a monster, it's doing a very great job, but there are things that need to be addressed, and these are not things that I've come up with. I've been speaking to all of these homeless people that come hang out around downtown, who sometimes will hang out in front of the place I work, and have never caused any issues with any of my customers. I think that there needs to be a way for these people's voices to be heard, there needs to be a way for the city council to try and push and make sure that the people who are having a stay at the mission have a say in the way it is being run. I think really, sort of what sums it up is that, you know, these people aren't here for the programs, the programs are here for them, and it's failing them over and over again. Thank you, guys. Have wonderful rest of your night.[1691.01][1691.01][applause]
Hi, my name is Alicia Smith. First and foremost, I am, I'm with the, I represent the VHRC, I work with TAP and the HAT team, as well as Ram House. I feel, it's so important for me to advocate for the homeless community, because I was part of the homeless community. I'm also in recovery, and I know first and foremost that the option of sleeping downtown where there was light, opposed to sleeping in Jackson Park where there wasn't, caused a lot of trauma in my life, that, thank God, due to recovery, I've been able to overcome, but if it were not for those options, I don't know where I'd be today. I certainly wouldn't be standing here being able to advocate for those that are less fortunate and haven't found the way out yet. The clients that I work with right now, there are stories I won't go into, because I don't have enough time to go through all of that, but I know that with my personal experience, I just want to be in a solution-based position, and that's where I am. I bridge the gap between literally going out to the places where people are homeless and filling out forms for them to be able to communicate with the HAT team and with Ram House, so that they can be housed, whether it be the mission, whether it be Trust House, which I've also worked with, I've worked in the rehab community. I've worked in the rehab community. Substance use disorder and homelessness, they go hand in hand, and I think we all know that. I think that this town showed a lot of lack of compassion. I do sympathize with the business owners, and I do understand where they are coming from. I also understand where the lighting from downtown made me feel a lot safer. I'm gonna try to not get emotional about this because it is very personal to me. I feel like we were worried more about housing and suitable shelters, which, like was mentioned before, where the Rescue Mission, you know, it's -- and I think that they do the best with what they have, but I do think that there needs to be more day shelters because when someone has to leave at eight o'clock in the morning, what are you gonna do? Most likely, they're going to use drugs. It's a feelings disease, and that's what we use over. These are people's mothers, sisters, brothers, uncles, sons. They're people, actual people. Some of them have been lawyers, they have been high in the community, and they have fallen, and it can happen to any of us. One bad decision can put us in those shoes. I had five scholarships, five, and they all went away when I became an addict. You know, last but not least, the latest count was two hundred and fifty, and that's grossly underestimated. People, I mean, in hotels and cars, you know, the street is right there where they're gonna be. I'll keep going out and finding these people, and I'll keep trying to get them housed, but it would really, really, really benefit them and myself and people in my position if the community would help a little bit more and show some compassion.
Our next speakers, David Garland, Eric Dalamo, and John Rose Brewer.
I'm speaking in favor of the proposal to further limit the unauthorized camping in public. I also recommend strengthening the changes and suggest that this is merely an improvement to methods and not really a change in public policy against unapproved camping whether public or private. I favor the proposed amendment, but it doesn't go far enough. If Council approves what has been proposed, then I advocate consideration of additional changes as soon as practical, and if a vote is delayed, I hope you'll strengthen it before it is voted on. The problem is that the proposal addresses only sidewalks and rights of way within the downtown service district, a very small part of the city, and camping without approved facilities is not only happening downtown, it happens near the airport, by the river, or other places. And the biggest problem is not that it occurs necessarily on sidewalks, although that is important, it is that it is typically unsanitary, generates unmanaged trash, and creates nuisance, and especially near open water or other people. To focus only on downtown is limited and could simply migrate the problem to other parts of the city. City manager's background brings up the Ninth Circuit case, Martin v Boise, or Boise, that suggests that the city can't entirely ban homeless camping in public, and while the Ninth Circuit decisions, which are frequently obtuse and bizarre, are not binding here in the Fourth Circuit, the city could nonetheless strengthen nuisance abatement consistent with the Martin case and also address the problem more generally through the city without creating a total ban. My proposal is this: prohibit unapproved public property camping within two hundred feet of open water, such as the Roanoke River and its tributaries and feeders, and also within fifty feet, or some reasonable distance, of any improved private residential property or any improved business property intended for regular human use, or something along those lines. A prohibition within certain feet of open water is consistent with -- or two hundred feet particularly, is consistent with National Park and Land Management Guidelines for primitive camping on federal lands to protect waterways from unmanaged waste and runoff, which is a topic of an earlier ordinance just passed earlier, to kind of combine some things dealing with waste management and littering law. A prohibition within fifty feet of private improved spaces and business activities is consistent with traditional concerns about sanitation, pests, hazards, and aesthetics that drive zoning and building regulations generally. And to a large extent, the notion of an ordinance to ban unapproved public camping is redundant, law already banned it by general regulation of habitation, sanitation, and congregations of people. Most of the time, homeless camping does not provide for human waste or wastewater associated with daily living. Both state and also Ronoc City Code provisions essentially regulate homeless camping through health and sanitation requirements, sewer -- sewage disposal requirements, solid waste and stormwater laws, and zoning. Ordinance 26-2 essentially echoes state law requiring approved sewage disposal for any habitation, business, or congregation of people, whether or not overnight, and whether or not public or private, and makes ongoing violations and misdemeanor. Ordinance 15-8 creates a local health -- gives the local health director public duty to discover and abate sanitary nuisances. It gives police officers the duty to report unsanitary conditions that are a health nuisance and makes them misdemeanor. So, but the existing laws and regulations lack a good mechanism for enforcement with respect to homeless encampment, and the applicable laws and regulations operate through health officials, city inspectors, various notices, and so on. The proposed amendments would improve the ability of officials to respond and do so in situations that don't involve typical habitations and structures.
To the City Hall vote on 2:00 PM, I, John Rose Brewer, found David Gray and his sole support saucer, his eight-year-old female dog. These wards of the state of Virginia had no place to rest their weary bones, but in front of the nineteen-seventy graduating class Andrew Lewis Pickle player entrance to the Health Department, the girl who won his heart, who won David Gray's heart. David Gray falls into a deep sleep the Friday morning of the third of December of 2021. About 7:15, I came there by bus, and I found him and his personal belongings in disarray. David kept his yellow bungee cord tied around his suitcase. I found him getting out of the way of the sidewalk cleaner. I parked his -- he parked his suitcase so that he threw his personal items into the Church Avenue Street. I, John, helped him recover these items and tried to -- as he tried to repack what his out, which was always out in his back, in his suitcase and bungo tie. I offered to stay him at my mom's trust apartment.
All right, our next speaker, Amy Trovel -- Trawell and Sam McCormick.
Hi, thanks. I had a much longer speech prepared, but I'm not going to bore you with it because it's like a B-plus, A-minus. So I just want to say this, I think what I've discovered as I've sitting back there and listening is we don't all live in the same Roanoke. We don't all experience the same Roanoke. We're a community, we share space together, but we've heard from people who don't get the services that we are saying exist, so they're not there. I am here on behalf of Ursula's Cafe. I am a downtown business owner. I am not in favor of this ordinance because I believe it criminalizes the symptoms without an effective plan to address the disease. I might quickly add, because I feel it's important, that Councilman Joe Cobb wrote an award-winning work about a different atrocity that this city is still wrestling with, and that's when we remove dead bodies from their final, although not so, resting place in the space that now our civic center rests on. Ronoc is still hoping to move bodies of those that stand in the way of commerce and capitalism, profit, and what we like to believe is progress. I think that we should learn something from our past mistakes and not do them again. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Samuel McCormick. Thank you so much for letting me have the privilege to come and speak before everyone who's attended today. I'm a vendor on the local historic farmer's market, and as I am in favor of this, there are some things I would like Council to take into consideration with the bill as well. Being a vendor on the market, we encounter people every day, and not every homeless person is a bad person. There are some good, and there are some bad. There's some that we have become friends with and talk to daily and just say hello to, but there are some people that do cause problems to our business and other local businesses. They will come and sleep on the city market stalls where there are actually a code there to prevent people from sitting on the stalls and being in the way of the vendors there that's not enforced. There's also the thing of, I think that there need to be a little bit more police involvement or some form of authority to be able to help with the vendors and other local businesses there who have to deal with people who are, you know, sleeping there, who are causing fights, whether it be homeless or vagrants, whatever their situation may be. There needs to be some help with us to help these people and to get the people to stop from fighting, stop from causing all these distractions, because it is a distraction as a businessperson, and affects my personal business, it affects other people's businesses. There's also been accounts where people have stolen things from myself, from other businesses around the area that I've talked to, the other vendors there as well. We had to deal with this all the time. You know, most of the vendors there come on weekends, and most of them don't live around the area. Several of the vendors that I've spoken to will not come back to Ronoc to vend on the market, and they are local artisans, local farmers, which bring in commerce and bring in more people because they want to see more locals as opposed to more box stores and things like that. So I think there'd be a little bit more management of that type of situation there, so that way we can also help the people that are homeless, because there, I think a tool would be really nice to have, is a lot of people who are coming in are not from this area who might be homeless. They do not know where to go, so another part I think would be good is to have some public tools available if someone needed help, they would know where the avenues to go to. So thank you so much.
Mayor, that's the last speaker on this matter.
Okay. All right. Thank you all for --
Mayor, might I say something? I didn't sign up to speak, but would you mind if I address that further?
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Lee Clark. I'm the CEO for the Rescue Mission, and I want to thank all of our speakers who've spoken today. You've really spoken from your hearts and have spoken from your experiences, and I've taken a lot of notes. And, you know, as someone who's been in this role for the last five years, or an organization that's been around nearly seventy-four years, am part of the BRIC, the Blue Regenerative Agency Council of Homelessness, a co-chair for the Ronoc Valley Collective Response, you know, there's many things that we've heard today that are information that is misleading, and I think one of the things we have to do, to your point, sir, is get better information out there about what's going on. You know, there's many ways in which we all work together to try to alleviate and prevent homelessness, and it is a hard job. We're here twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and you all have worked with us to help support us in that regard. Our shelters are open. We've trained our staff on trauma-informed care. We just today had training for our team on LGBTQ issues and how to better welcome people from any kind of a background or persuasion. You know, I think some things have been said today about needing more day shelters. I think certainly that is true. I think that more housing, when people have experienced drug abuse and addiction, certainly there's no requirement at the mission, you don't have to be sober to come in for a safe place to be. And to someone's point, you know, having that safe place to be is often that first step towards sobriety and long-term stability. Saving money is a big important part when people become employed. People do save seventy-five percent as a part of their case management work with our team. That old money comes back to them to help them, and so many people have gotten housing as a result of that. There are things to learn, and again, I've taken many notes today. Again, I want to thank you for your input, certainly have heard a lot, heard your comments, heard what you've had to say. We want to be better, we want to be stronger, we want to continue to support our community in the way that we've done for the last seventy-four years. So thank you for allowing me to say that, Mayor Lee. I certainly appreciate all of your efforts, and City Manager and everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Is anybody else out there that wants to come up and speak that didn't sign the petition? I want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to say or give their thoughts on it if you're in here now. Yes, ma'am, come on up, give us your name as you come up.
Hello, my name is Ezekiel Bassar. I am part of the homeless community, and I figured that I'm probably one of the more well-spoken members of the community, so I would come up here and say something for us since no one else came. Number one, as I said, I am part of it. I know where the flaws are, I see where the flaws are, I feel where the flaws are. These things that are being put in place, quote-unquote, "to help us and further us into being productive members of society," they don't exist. They are not what they are painted to be, they're not the picture that's framed for us, and quite frankly, it's kind of sad to see how well-spoken of that these services are and how sadly they are actually put into play. I, number one, am not a drug addict, and I would be more than happy to submit to a drug test right now. I do not drink alcohol, and in fact, I have a completely different reason why I'm homeless, however, I will not get into that. So to say that it is due to mental illness and drug addiction is far from the truth. I think that this is not going to help anything at all, and in fact, is going to make the issue more severe and more irritating for y'all to deal with, because nobody is going to have their home stripped from them, correct? Would you allow someone to come up to your house and tell you, "You're leaving because we don't want you here"? No, you wouldn't. And I don't believe it's going to be the same for us. We're humans just as much as you, and to be treated any less is tragic. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all who've come forward and shared your thoughts with us, and I will now ask my colleagues if they have any comments. I'm sure they do. And we'll start -- who'd like to start? Bill, will you?
Thanks for putting me on the spot, Mr. Mayor.
Somebody got to be on the spot.
I understand. I certainly agree with Lee Clark. We've heard a lot of very impassioned concerns and opinions on both sides of this issue today. I think everybody recognizes that we have a long-term problem and we have an immediate problem, a short-term problem. The long-term problem is not going to be solved by this ordinance that's in front of us today. I don't think anybody would ever make that claim. The long-term problem is not going to be solved today, no matter what. I think that, as Mr. Cal pointed out, we have been investing a significant amount of funding to support programs that help end homelessness, including the health and substance abuse funding, which I understand, that doesn't apply to everybody. There's nothing that we could say that applies to everybody, whether they have a home or don't have a home. And none of the programs that we have supported over the years is perfect. Not one is perfect. So if the focus is on trying to find the flaws, the shortcomings, the weaknesses, whatever, and that's the problem, we can always find that. If we focus on the successes and the solutions that have been achieved, we will certainly find those as well. Almost everything that has been suggested as a better way to deal with folks who don't have a home right now are things that we are doing, have been doing for some time, or that are under active consideration for how we can expand and add to the array of services that is available, and I think that's demonstrated by the fact that And I think that's demonstrated by the fact that over the last 10 years, the population of homeless people in the city of Roanoke has gone down by approximately 50%. So we've been doing some things that work. We've had some success, and we need to continue that. I could say a lot, somebody mentioned my background in social work, almost four-decade career, part of which included working in treatment programs for substance abuse. And I know anybody that's been around any of the 12-step programs will tell you that addiction is cunning, baffling, and powerful. Cunning enough to encourage people to look at all those flaws and weaknesses and say, "Well, I can't go here, I can't accept that for all these reasons." Really rationalization. Any program that we have or that we start, any housing program, for example, is going to have requirements and restrictions, things that people must do to participate and take advantage of that program, and things that they may not do. So if, again, if folks are focused on, "Well, I don't want anybody telling me I have to do this and I can't do that," there's no way we can structure a program that's going to solve that problem. So it's kind of baffling, and it's powerful enough to encourage an addict to say anything to protect that addiction because you're not talking to the individual that you so desperately want to help. That's not who you're hearing. You're hearing the addiction speaking over top of that person. And again, I know that doesn't apply to every homeless person, but it's a large percentage. So the short-term problem, we have Warehouse Row townhouses on Norfolk Avenue that are the homes of downtown residents. I don't think that anyone here, and Mr. Mayor, I apologize for having to be so graphic about it, but I don't think anybody here would think it was okay for somebody to just come and urinate in their front yard or lean up against the wall of their house and defecate and not do anything about it, not think that something should prevent that from happening, especially when you have the same person or small number of persons coming day after day after day after day and doing the same thing. That's what our neighbors and our residents on Norfolk Avenue have experienced. Many of these people have rejected or declined the help that has been offered to them by our folks in the homeless assistance team and by others many, many, many times. I just don't think that means we should give up on them. I think we have to keep trying to get through to them, and one of the ways that we can do that is by having police involved who tell them, "This behavior is not acceptable." I don't think anybody in the city of Roanoke deserves to be left on the sidewalk. And that's the short-term consequence that I've heard. Let's just leave them there. Leave them alone. I don't think that helps anybody. I see no compassion whatsoever in saying, "Leave anybody on the sidewalk." So I hope we all rededicate ourselves to continuing to support all the efforts that are out there, continuing to look for additional resources, services, and programs that can address more the need. But today, the need is to be able to tell folks, "That's not okay." So I will be voting in favor of the ordinance. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I want to thank everybody for speaking today. I think we've certainly heard the complexity of this issue and the variety of voices and lived experiences, and I will confess to you all that I'm very conflicted about this for a number of reasons. Since 1997, when I was in a very vulnerable place in my life and began working for an urban ministry in Wichita, Kansas, I began to understand on a very personal level the challenges that people who have vulnerabilities face, whether they are lacking food or healthcare or are struggling with homelessness. And it made me realize that many people in our world are one paycheck away from being homeless, or one medical emergency away from being homeless, or one rejection by family because of their sexual orientation and gender identity toward being homeless. I mean, I could go on with the list. So one of the things that I think this conversation has drawn us to is the reality that we're all facing our vulnerabilities and we're all facing our fears. And the very things that many of our most vulnerable in the city are living with and facing right now are the very things we don't want to face in our own lives, and yet many of us have. I think many of our business owners have been in a place in their life, maybe it was much earlier or even recently, where they were in a similar situation, and through a variety of really great steps and support, they're now small business owners in our community. Our vision as a city is for the city to be a safe, caring, and economically vibrant community in which all have equitable opportunities to live, learn, work, play, and prosper. How do we create that when there is this clash of realities? And we have to acknowledge that clash, and we have to figure out the best ways as a city to not only represent the things that create that clash, but to create solutions that can best address it. The struggle I have with the ordinance is not the piece of the ordinance that keeps our sidewalks clear and safe. I agree with that piece of it, and I also agree with the scooters. The problem I'm having internally with the ordinance is the misdemeanor and the fine that's connected with that. And I really wish there was a way that they didn't have to be connected because I think there's a way that we can support the ordinance, but I've heard voice after voice say, "We don't want to criminalize someone's vulnerability." However, we also need to acknowledge that there are a lot of behaviors that our business owners and downtown residents have witnessed and seen and experienced that are troubling. And if we don't have some kind of structure that people can feel safe in, they can feel encouraged to grow, they can have access to services, then there's a problem. And if we don't address that in some way, then it can get amplified. I heard today, you know, we have a new comprehensive plan, interwoman equity is a critical part of that. I've heard today that we want equity for our community's vulnerable citizens facing homelessness, and I would say any challenges. Equity of safety for all of our residents and guests, not only safety for people who are experiencing homelessness or being unhoused, but people who want to live safely anywhere in the city. And we've got a lot of parts of the city that people don't feel safe in. So that's a big issue that we've got to work on. I'm also concerned that if we adopt this, then as we are talking with people, and I know this is already happening with the HAT team and with the least of these ministries, that through relationships with people who are living this reality, people are getting housed, and people are on waiting lists to get housed, and there's a shortage of housing. But I'm concerned that if we don't have an option on where to direct people, many of them don't want to go to a dark place, many want to have a place that's light and has some safety and security. I've been reading about a pilot program that was adopted this summer in Portland called Safe Rest Villages with the intention of having people dwell in community with mobile teams or onsite teams, multidisciplinary teams that provide the support that they need. Now, that takes some time to put into action, but it was funded by ARPA funding, and I don't know how much funding we have available to do that, but it's a program called Safe Rest Village From Streets to Stability. And I also heard today a lot of conversation about housing stability. I know, thanks to the HAT team, 87 vouchers have been issued for people searching for I believe that between 30 and 40 have received housing, is that accurate? And there's still quite a waiting list, and I don't know how the waiting list works. But I know that part of our challenge is that, and I say this from my experience as being Director of Family Promise, what used to be called Interfaith Hospitality Network, that when I would go with someone who was seeking housing to try and get them into an apartment and look at the state of the apartment, I could not recommend that they live there. And I didn't want to keep them in our shelter program longer, but some of the properties that landlords are renting in Roanoke are horrific. No one should live in them. They should be condemned and taken down or put in the hands of a responsible landlord who will keep up the property. So I'm just identifying some of the challenges here. Some of the solutions that I've heard and that I think would be helpful are to continue to invest even more deeply in our city's supportive services. And if some of our unhoused residents are experiencing barriers, let's figure out why there are barriers. Why are they not getting access to those services? Increase our permanent supportive housing. There are ways to adopt vulnerable citizens. We have agencies, T-Lot, HAT team. If you want to support someone who is struggling with homelessness, find a way to support them individually and make sure they get the support and services that they need. I believe we, you know, I fully support the Rescue Mission. I think Lee and the staff have worked to bring about incredible change. Eight years ago, I was asked to do an in-service on LGBTQ issues in the shelter, and I know that some staff left the mission after I gave that in-service, but many more staff have come on, and Lee just said to you that they continue to have training. Now, it takes a little while for a lot of people to get on board with that training, but it's critical, and we do need to make sure that we're offering that. But I think we need a low-barrier shelter. I appreciated the CHRC and Anne Marie's suggestion about a low-barrier shelter with harm reduction support. We have some great harm reduction teams in the Roanoke area, and we should continue to partner with them in ways that we can do that. And that ties in with multidisciplinary teams as well. So I just want to share with you that how I'm conflicted about this, and I think I'm not alone in that. I think all of us feel some of that to some degree. But I appreciate you all being here today, and thank you for all the ways in which you care about the most vulnerable in our city to make sure that they all can find a way to, and we all can find a way to, be healthy and safe and thrive. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will try to be brief. First, I want to say thank you to all of you for coming down today, taking a part of your Monday afternoon, and thank you to those who are not here that sent emails or made phone calls. I certainly appreciate that because those comments, concerns, and recommendations were truly helpful for me. I do have one question for Mr. Clark at the Rescue Mission. I know you didn't sign up, so you kind of rushed through your presentation, but there are a lot of folks in the emails that came to me, said that, you know, they didn't want to go to the Rescue Mission because you force religion, but I understand that that is not the case. Can you clarify that briefly for me?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. Clark, come up to the podium, please.
And I won't keep you long. I just wanted to clear that up because I received so many emails with that particular concern.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. That's a really good question. You know, we are Christian as an organization, that's who we are. We do offer lots of support from the local community, a place where volunteers and the church can get involved there onsite. You know, traditionally, we offered a church service every night that people were required to attend as a part of their evening. One of the things that changed as a part of COVID and our COVID response was that we removed that requirement. We still offer lots of ways in which people can get involved and can get connected to the local faith community. We have some folks who are maybe Muslim, who don't share our faith, and we get them connected to other resources as well. We want to be sure, one of the signs, I think, of a healthy community is the way in which we all interact together, and the faith community is certainly a part of that. But we don't require that anyone think a certain way or make a certain faith statement or think the same way that I do or anyone else does at the mission. We welcome everyone in. The faith is a component of who we are, why we do what we do, but we don't require that you think a certain way or act a certain way or espouse a certain denomination or anything else at all like that. I hope that helps.
It does help. I just wanted to make sure that was not the case.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. One other thing that I heard from someone that spoke this evening was requests for more housing vouchers. The last time I met with Matt Crookshank with the homeless assistant team, we had vouchers, and of course, I think we have all come to the conclusion that there's just not enough housing. So we do have the vouchers. I was also a part of the American Rescue Act Plan Committee, the commission, along with the mayor. The mayor was actually the chair, and I was the co-chair, and all of our discussion, we came up with homelessness as an issue, and that was something that we needed to address with the funding. And so I hope that we will continue to focus on that because it is an issue. I had an experience just Friday after Thanksgiving. I went to pick some berries that I normally pick behind the old post office for decoration, and I went behind there and I found a woman behind a dumpster on a mattress, and I was afraid for her. I couldn't sleep that night, and I called Matt. I was surprised that he answered because it was their day off. Matt texted me back and said, "We sent someone out to check on her," and she, you know, she's been around several times. She was actually on Oakland before, and she wouldn't let me help her. The only thing she asked me for was a sandwich and a drink, which I got her a sandwich and a drink, but I said, "Ma'am, how can I help you? What can I do?" And she said, "There's nothing you can do. My sister's going to help me." So Matt reached out, his team reached out, and he said that they couldn't get anywhere. But he did tell me, "We will continue to try to work with her to make steps in the right direction." Am I quoting you correctly, Matt? And so that's the sort of thing that we have to do, and we have to do it as a community, just like with the gun violence. It is incumbent upon all of us to try to do what we can for the homeless situation because it is an issue, and it is really tough for all of us. I mean, I couldn't sleep that night. That really upset me to see that. But then I was hopeless because I could not help her. So one thing that we want to focus on as a council, and I know I've talked to some of my colleagues, is to make sure that our services are reaching the people that they need to reach. We realize that there is a problem with our service delivery, not just for the homelessness, but for people who are looking for grants, who are looking for small business loans. There are a lot of gaps in our services, and so that is one of the things that the city manager and his staff have been working on. So I hope that we will continue to do something that will improve the homelessness situation, but I will say that there is not an easy solution or any easy answers, and that's why I'm grateful that you sent the emails and that you came down, and you mentioned the need for day shelters. That just set a light off for me. I'm so glad to hear that because we absolutely need more day shelters. So thank you for coming down, and I appreciate all of your comments, recommendations, and I appreciate your concerns. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we'll go right down. It's Jeffries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I might have to take this mask off, my glasses keep fogging up every time I try to talk, so bear with me. I mean, first of all, I want to thank all of I mean, first of all, I want to thank all the citizens providing their input, concerns, just like my other colleagues. We received countless emails and phone calls regarding this. And I want to thank everyone who's contacted me directly and expressing their feelings. You know, during my campaign and after being elected, one of the things that I constantly heard was hearing constant complaints from our downtown businesses regarding this issue. This is a complex issue of homelessness in our city. We have some paralyzing views on how to solve it. I truly sympathize our citizens that are homeless, that are homeless. But we, I don't think we need to compound the issues by having individuals camping on our sidewalks disrupting small business activities. One of our speakers today mentioned and talked about choices. And I believe everyone has the fundamental right to make choices in how they want to live their lives. But it shouldn't harm, impede, or even create conflict with everyone else around you. And unfortunately, some of our citizens that are camping on our sidewalks are causing some of these conflicts. I've seen these comments. I've seen the videos. I've seen the texts regarding activities that are damaging business owners. I think, I strongly believe that we need to treat this homeless crisis in our city just as we create, just as well as this gun violence is in our city. Because I think the gun violence is impacting all of us. But I think this homeless issue, it's not just impacting the downtown area, but I think it impacts all aspects of our neighborhoods and community. So as we move forward, I think we need to strongly consider thinking about that we do create a commission to really seriously start talking about how are we going to solve the homelessness issues in our city. I personally try to do my best in helping with the homeless. I personally work with churches who have individuals, especially in other areas of the city, especially communities of color, who are homeless. And I financially put my money behind this. So I understand the seriousness of homelessness in our community. So I just wanted to really take this time to thank everyone of people providing their input. Again, I still hear these complaints, and we need to have some type of action, how we deal with it. I do support the ordinance, but I truly don't, I do have a serious problem about the criminalization of it. I really do. I wish we have a better alternative than the penalty of what we need to do. However, I am in favor of this moving forward.
Thank you. Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am just overwhelmed with thinking about this. I wasn't going to say anything, but I felt I needed to, along with what my colleagues have said. And I feel for the homeless. I feel for those that work downtown. I have a question for the manager, and that question is with the HAT team. My question is with the staff protocol for the outreach services, is the staff working every day, is it a twenty-four-hour, seven-day-a-week outreach program? I have never known, and so I-
No, there are three outreach workers, in addition to Matt Crookshank, that are responsible for our part of it. Now, there are also caseworkers at the mission. There are caseworkers in other areas, all which are integrated together. But in terms of the city's outreach efforts, we have three outreach workers, and they're working generally typical weeks, though they work evenings on a couple of times during the week as well. But no, there are three.
So we really don't have enough employees on staff to accommodate what they have all shared with regards to trying to deal with the homeless. When crisis hit, we only have three workers that go out.
I don't know that I would say that we don't have adequate staffing. Obviously, with any of our departments, we could add staffing to address additional service levels. That certainly could be true with HAT as well. One of the challenges, as has been exhibited here, is their end effort is to get people connected to services, get them in housing. The bigger issue is actually at the end of that process, which is the lack of affordable housing that exists within the community. Talked about, there are more vouchers available than there are places for folks to actually end up. So if at the end of the day, you're asking me where best to put our dollars, it is in supporting, as we have been, the expansion of additional housing opportunities, as well as job opportunities and so on.
And this is not a question, nor is it a criticism. But do we know the socioeconomic status of those camping in the downtown area? You know, is there data? I know you have one mention the data. But I'm more interested in if these individuals, are they city residents or these that have been, more or less just have come into our city from other localities?
It varies. Answer part of your question is yes, there's data available if they have been a part of the intake. So if they've entered into the system through any of the partners that we've talked about or that have addressed you here, they'll know that. Now, anecdotally, the outreach workers, I'm sure Dawn knows, folks that aren't even in the system and kind of their history with it. You know, there is this perception, I think, in the community that we have people coming from all over the place. And I'm not saying there aren't folks coming in, but by and large, folks that are here, that are in our system, are residents of our community. And, you know, but we do have the data that's available. And then there's a lot of anecdotal information from those workers as well.
And the other question that I have is, I just lost my train of thought. Just cannot think of it. I guess it wasn't that important to ask. Unless it comes back to me, I think that was all the questions I have.
Are you done, Ms.?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Vivian Sanchez-Jones.
This has been the really two hard weeks of reading all the emails that a lot of people sent to me, some against it and some pro the ban on the camping ordinance. I have listened to all the opinions today, all the testimonies. I understand that many valid points have been brought up about the lack of inclusive housing for certain groups. And there is still work to be done, which I'll commit to find out where the gaps in services are by bringing together stakeholders so we could look into where those gaps are. I understand that Blue Ridge Coalition is the Blue Ridge Interagency Council for Homeless. It works together as well as the HAT team. But there has to be a gap somewhere. Something is not making a connection. So I would like to look into what are the ways we can be of service and connect with those agencies.
Thank you. Well, without having to be redundant and repeat the things that have been said, it's tough to do it because all of it is important. But let me just say, this proposed ordinance is to protect the economic vitality of the many small businesses that operate downtown, employing hundreds of people, and to ensure that downtown remains economically successful, contributing to attract residents to move downtown, businesses to open, visitors. All of that contributes to really the economic success of the entire Roanoke region. That's important. But let me say this, as a mayor, this city has and will continue to respond to the challenges of homelessness. We're going to continue to do that in a compassionate manner. And as you've heard, some of the speakers, some of my colleagues say that. We're going to do that, investing in resources to address the causes of homelessness. The delivery of new affordable housing is still on the table, assisting those that find themselves without housing. That's important, and we're going to continue to do that. And let me also say, in the last three years alone, the city has provided over five million dollars in affordable housing assistance, two million for homeless services that has made significant investments, and we've made these investments, in mental health services. That's important. And substance use disorder treatment. And we continue to serve the region's service providers by coordinating central intake through the efforts of our Homeless Assistant Team, which is, I think, doing a good job. Significant portions of our CARES Act that we got last year for COVID and ARPA funding are good to, you know, are going really to address the issues of shelter, mental health, free to low-cost healthcare, and job training. And again, affordable housing. And we have been talking a lot about affordable housing. So we can and must balance compassion for those experiencing homelessness and the vitality and success of our downtown. We have to weigh that as elected officials. We're concerned, and as my colleague mentioned, we're conflicted, so we have to balance that. And that's what we're doing, and that's what we will continue to do. But allowing on our sidewalks in downtown, and that's what it is downtown, will do nothing to end homelessness. It's not going to end it. And places at risk those people who are sleeping outside, as well as those that are living downtown and working, those who are working and visiting downtown. It's not going to resolve that. So we have to work to do what we can. We must retain a strong, vibrant downtown. That's critical. We have to do that. And a vibrant local economy to offer the services and opportunities that will care for those temporarily without a home and provide pathways to get out of homelessness. That's our commitment, and that's what we're going to be doing as a council. So I think that's important that you know that, and we've got to balance that. That's our role as elected officials. We're concerned with the homelessness, but also we have to keep a vibrant downtown and businesses, and people deserve to have that, to live down there, and to have those businesses to operate. That's important. All right, so thank you all for coming, and we're going to call for the vote officially on this. But thank you for coming and sharing your thoughts and comments. Madam Clerk, please call a vote.
Vice Mayor White Floyd?
Aye.
Mr. Bespin?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
No.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
No.
Ms. Sanchez-Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye.
And I was having an ordinance adopted. Thank you. All right, we'll take a five-minute break, come back and continue with the agenda. To recognize the city manager for any comments that he may have.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and I actually do have a number of comments. So I apologize again for the length, but I'll go through these as quickly as I can. As you all know, and as we have been communicating in a variety of different ways, the online grant applications have begun for a number of our American Rescue Plan Act programs that we have in place. You'll remember that that effort is divided into two categories, recovery, those are the most immediate needs, and then resiliency. Those are the bigger, longer-term initiatives. So currently, these are in that recovery category. So individuals, families, nonprofits, mental health service providers, substance use treatment, small businesses, and arts and cultural organizations are all now eligible for a variety of grant programs that are available under the ARPA funding. And they may apply through the City of Roanoke. If you go onto the Roanoke website for Star City Strong, there's an online application process associated with that as they go through. Also, I want to remind everyone that the deadline to participate in the Youth and Gang Violence Community Assessment is tomorrow.
No, it's Friday.
It's Friday, so okay. Friday the 10th, thank you. So it is Friday the 10th. This is, again, a reminder that the Commission is undertaking a Youth and Gang Violence Community Assessment to provide community-driven perspectives, particularly youth perspectives, on the issues surrounding gang violence. The assessment's being completed through direct interviews, as well as the survey that I just mentioned, that will be disseminated through a variety of methods as well. And again, additional information about this survey is available on our website under the About Roanoke section. And certainly, there are other ways to access it as well. Nonprofit organizations seeking community development block grants, home investment partnership grants, emergency solutions grants, or CDBGCV CARES, that's the Coronavirus CARES Act. Funding for eligible activities for FY 2023. May access an application on the city's website. Applications are due online to the city's HUD Community Resources Division by midnight on Wednesday, January 19th, 2022. Would be remiss if I didn't say that essentially everyone that spoke here today that is associated with providing services to the homeless have qualified and received funding under these programs. Details for how to apply are posted on our website homepage, again, under the About Roanoke section. Also, the Spring 2022 Leadership College registration is open, as far as we anticipate. This will be conducted in person. It's a nine-week community leadership program designed to increase the level of effective communication between city government and residents. Classes will meet on Thursday evenings beginning in March and run through May. The plan right now is that those meetings will predominantly take place here at the municipal building. Registration is free, but participants must live or work in the City of Roanoke and commit to attending the majority of those sessions. More information can be found at the website, again, at the Leadership College, or the Office of Neighborhood Services Facebook page. Or they may contact Josh Johnson in Neighborhood Services via email or phone as well. And then the final piece of information I have is I wanted to share with you all that, as we discussed at the recent budget planning retreat, I have informed the directors of my intent to request a number of pay adjustments within the organization, some of which will require your action coming on the 20th. So I just want to kind of walk through these, as I have shared with you all previously. That includes an additional retention bonus for our police department and fire department, as well as the telecommunicators with 911. This retention bonus would be an additional $1,500. This is for those individuals that are employed with the city in January and remain employed with the city in June. This is on the heels, of course, of a $2,000 bonus, which is payable in January. This is actually the fourth bonus that you, if approved, that you will have authorized for our public safety folks since COVID has begun. Additionally, I will be proposing a bonus for all the non-sworn personnel. So these are all the rest of the organization, with the exception of myself. And that will be, for full-time employees, that will be a $1,000 one-time bonus. And for part-time employees, that will be a $500 one-time bonus. That will be payable in January. I'm also proposing that for all non-sworn personnel, if you'll remember, the sworn personnel are under a new pay plan that we're implementing over the course of three years. So that's why I'm isolating the bonuses, proposing to separate the bonuses for public safety from those of the others. So for all those non-sworn positions, I am proposing that we- So for all those non-sworn positions, I am proposing that we elevate our minimum wage such that no employee will receive, part-time or full-time, will receive less than $15 per hour, and that will occur for this year, FY 22, as well as '23, and then it will get incorporated into our base budget as we move forward. This funding is a part of the ARPA Act, which allows us to pay additional hourly rates for those performing essential services as, again, as we move forward. That will be in addition to the bonus that I just mentioned, so if someone is currently making $10 an hour and is elevated to $15 an hour, and they are full-time, they too will qualify for that $1,000 bonus that I mentioned earlier as well. And I also want to mention that we're also, I'll be recommending a recruitment bonus for up to $5,000 for police officers. We already have in place a bonus, a recruitment bonus, for anyone that is a certified officer that's willing to transfer from another agency in. This will be for new folks actually entering our academy. As was discussed at the retreat, this is something that would be paid upon accomplishments. So, for example, once they graduate from the academy, there's a certain part of the bonuses granted, and once they complete their first year, there's a second piece of that bonus that is authorized. This, of course, goes alongside, as I mentioned previously, the public safety pay schedule that we put in place that you all approved in the last budget, that we'll continue to implement over the next couple of years. This is also in addition to the $3,000 that was authorized by the General Assembly for the sheriff's deputies. That is why I was specific in recommending for the police, fire, and 911, the sheriff's deputies, the General Assembly addressed as well, and this is also in addition to a compensation assessment that is underway for the entire organization that will be incorporated into the FY '23 budget. So again, some of these items are already able to be implemented under the current budget. Others will have to come back to you at your December 20 meeting, so you'll be seeing some of those items again as we move forward. So that concludes my comments, and thank you. And thank you all for, as I shared that with you at the budget retreat, for your support in that effort, and what I trust will be your support when we bring it forward on the 20th as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any council members have any questions? All right. We now move to the approval of a purchase of property located at 1414 Memorial Avenue Southwest. There is an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance authorizing the city manager or his designate to execute a purchase and sell agreement with 1414 Memorial LLC for the purchase of an approximately 106,752 square feet parcel, square foot parcel of commercial real property located at 1414 Memorial Avenue Southwest, Roanoke, Virginia, bearing official tax map number 1230401 by the City of Roanoke, Virginia, upon certain terms and conditions, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right. Any questions or comments by members of council?
I will, even though this is under the city attorney's, I mean, it is because David Collins of the city attorney's office has been helping us with this piece, but just to clarify, and again, I've talked with each of you individually about this, but just for those that are wondering, what is 1414 Memorial Avenue? This is a property which was previously the Richardson Wayland Electric Company building, so if you're crossing the Memorial Bridge, you kind of look down and see where the large facility, the large building is, which was purchased, I believe, maybe two years ago by someone that trusts is interested in selling the property, we're interested in acquiring the property. This would serve as a location for our Parks and Recreation staff, that is, our field staff, to actually house themselves, as well as their equipment, separate from our Public Works Service Center, which itself is constantly bursting at the seams. And so this gives us both the opportunity to expand those operations, also because of its location adjacent to parks, the river, and the greenway, it actually offers us some opportunities for programming activities that may be a part of this as well. As is noted in the purchase agreement, there are a number of due diligence steps we still need to go through, including environmental inspections and other activities that are necessary before we actually close on it, but this is the first step in that process.
And, Mr. Mayor, I would, one reason, one of the assets David Collins brings to our office is his ability. As you know, he worked to purchase the Roanoke Times Building on behalf of the schools, and again, his services are instrumental in negotiating and working on this agreement.
That's great. Don't get to see him much. Didn't see those much. Believe me.
All you have to do is come in at about 9 o'clock at night, you'll see him still here.
All right. We do appreciate David and his work and his commitment to the city. Thank you. All right, any questions, members of council? All right, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Bespin?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the ordinance passes. Item number two, Madam Clerk, is the amendment of the city code to update and clarify the miscellaneous offense section. There's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance. Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance amending and reordaining Chapter 21 offenses dash miscellaneous of the city code of, of the code of the City of Roanoke as amended, providing for an effective date, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. Any comments or discussions by members of council? Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Bespin?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Item number three is an amendment of the city code in connection with clean special fuels. There's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance amending and reordaining subsection D, Section 32-104, levied rate Article III, tax on tangible personal property generally, Chapter 32, taxation code of the City of Roanoke as amended, which provides for a special personal property tax rate for certain motor vehicles which use clean special fuels, establishing an effective date, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right. Any discussion by members of council? Hurry now, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Bespin?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and your ordinance passes. Item number eight, reports of committees. In a presentation of proposed 2022 legislative program, Councilmember Rem T. Bespin is the chair of the Legislative Committee. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right, I'll ask the clerk to please read the title paragraph.
A resolution adopting and endorsing a legislative program for the city to be presented to the city's delegation to the 2022 session of the General Assembly and authorizing the city's legislative liaison to advocate the positions of the city with respect to matters presented during the 2022 session of the General Assembly.
Thank you. Any discussion or comments? Mr. Bespin?
Well, Mr. Mayor, as you all know, this has been an evolving document over a number of years, excuse, number of years, number of months. It feels like years sometimes, but a number of months here, and we do have a couple of little changes that I would like to bring to your attention. On item six, which is about the funds for the capital investment in the innovation corridor, we need to change the amount from $10 million to $15 million, which is a good change to be able to make, and just put the period after companies in the innovation corridor. In other words, deleting the reference to Ramp and the Research Institute. And then on number eight, which is about the land bank, to add that Senator Edwards and Delegate Russell are both, have expressed their intention to introduce this legislation on the land bank, which gives us a chief patron in the House and a chief patron in the Senate, which is always a good thing to have. So, Mr. Mayor, I would move the amendment to change those two things in item six and item eight.
All right. Is there a second amendment?
Second.
All right.
So we need to vote on the amendment and then vote on the resolution. Yes, we do.
All right, we want to vote on that, and Madam Clerk, are you up with us on that?
Yes, sir.
All right, we want to vote on the amendment.
Okay. Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Bespin?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and now we will...
And, Mr. Mayor, if I might, before we vote on the resolution, let me just reiterate something that I said this morning about all of us getting involved and keeping our eyes and ears open on what's going on in the General Assembly this year. I think our legislators need to hear from all of us, and I think the one-on-one conversations that we can have many times can be much more effective than the group discussions that we have. And, of course, we also recognize that any number of things may pop up during the General Assembly session that we did not anticipate, that we did not hear about in advance. So anything that anybody sees that you think is going to affect the City of Roanoke, whether it's positively or negatively, you know, please let the rest of us know that you heard about this bill that's in the General Assembly that maybe we need to pay some attention to, and maybe even contact our legislative liaison about working either for or against that particular legislation. So it's been my pleasure to serve on this committee and to chair it for the last couple of years, and as I reminded you all a few months ago, I won't be around for the 2023 General Assembly session, so I hope somebody is thinking about moving, stepping up to take on this committee chair. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Bespin, so let me ask you a question.
Sure.
While we're doing it, because it's in reference to talking to our legislators, are they giving ample notices when we're meeting in terms of coming to us? Because I've noticed one or two have been absent several times, more than once, and I'm just a little concerned with that in terms of them not being here.
Well, my understanding is that Ms. Cook from the city attorney's office contacted everybody a few weeks ago, contacted them again at the beginning of this past week, and I personally emailed each one of them with a copy of the final, I didn't do it as a good email, I emailed each one individually with a copy of the final program and as they contend. Delegate Austin replied and said that he regretted that he was not able to be with us this morning, but I think we can count on his help in a lot of ways. He's been very supportive of us on a lot of local issues, so I'm not sure, I understand your concern.
And I know I'm not saying we're not, I just want to do that because it's important that they can be here, and I'm just, I'm keeping up with the absentee, you know, ones that don't show, and I'm just, I think at some point, we might want to remind them how important this meeting is.
I agree with you, I understand your concern, and we just don't have the authority to, after three unexcused absences, to...
No, and I'm not saying we have the authority, but we do have an obligation to the people that elected us to say, okay, where is your presence?
Yes.
You know, I don't want to ever lose that.
I understand.
All right, now we're voting on the amendment.
The resolution as amended.
All right, is there, do we need to have a motion on that?
No, we've already made the motion.
Okay, well, call a roll, Madam Clerk.
All right. Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Bespin?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and thank you, thank you, Mr. Bespin, for your work over the years on this and your efforts to keep us moving forward. Appreciate that, and so we want to thank you as we go forward into 2022, '23.
Maybe after everything we've been through today, I'll attempt to sort of wrap things up on a lighter note. You know, we agreed with some of the things that were said today, we disagreed with some of the things that were said today by our legislators. But as you recall, my final position on the election date was to move it to November of the odd-numbered years and not the even-numbered years. And the thing that I talked about at that time was allowing us to run in partnership with people who are running for the General Assembly and talk about what we can do in the city if this person gets elected to council and this person gets elected to General Assembly, things they can work together on. What I didn't say, but was always in the back of my mind, is that if we moved it to the odd-numbered years, I would get a six-month parole since I've decided that this is going to be my last term, and I remember the pro board, you certainly understand how important that is to folks. As it turned out, I got six months added to my sentence, even though I've tried and tried to be on good behavior.
I appreciate that, I understand it, and let me just say, regarding today, I just felt, and that's me, it's not this council, that's me, that felt that I think it's inappropriate for someone to come at this meeting, which we didn't have to go there, to question the integrity of a decision made by this council, and that's what I felt.
I understand.
It was the integrity that put up and said, why you did it, you did this because. And I'm saying, this coming from a legislator that's nodding out, that doesn't cover this city, I thought that was inappropriate, very inappropriate, and he opened that door. And so I think, I felt it was incumbent upon me to respond to that. All right, we're down to item number...
Go home.
Where are we, Madam Clerk? I lost my position.
Well, you stopped at item eight. Nine, we have none, and 10, we have none, so I guess we're at 11 motions and miscellaneous business.
All right. Are there any motions of miscellaneous business from the members of council?
Just have a quick announcement. Thursday night at 6:00 is the annual Bridging the Community Gap, which is a partnership between the Gun Violence Prevention Commission and TAP. It'll start at the Martin Luther King Memorial, and there will be a walk down to the holiday tree where there will be a ceremony and an ornament placed on the tree remembering those who've died from gun violence this year. And then I wanted to share with you all some sad news. One of the members of the Elite Business Strategies Team that's been working with us on the Youth and Gang Violence Community Assessment, Mr. Greg McLean, passed away yesterday morning at Roanoke Memorial Hospital after a short illness, and his wife, Leslie, came to be with him from Dallas, and we're working with them to provide any support that we can for the family, as well as the EBS team. So thank you for letting me share that opportunity, and our sympathy goes out to Greg's family.
All right, thank you. Mr. Jeffrey?
I just want to take a quick moment. Recently, some of you have heard that my brother-in-law, Clayton Wims, was murdered on Williamson Road a couple of weeks ago, and I wanted to take this time to really acknowledge from the behalf of my family, the support, the emails, the text messages, the visits in support of our family during this tragic event. in support of our family during this tragic event. We, a couple of days ago, we received word from Chief Roman that arrest has been made. And so my family, in some form or fashion, we, we feel some content that, that arrest is made. And now we have to go through the due process of conviction. But I just wanted to take the time to really thank not only the people who reached out through us through social media, as well as through the text messages and phone calls, but also from my colleagues, their messages of support. And particularly, one of my colleagues, Joe Cobb, who brought brisket and barbecue to the family, to our home, which I must say that we definitely enjoyed that experience. And so I just really wanted to take that time to, to really thank everyone as we go through this second phase in our process of, of healing through this incident. Thank you.
Okay. And if I might, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I, I just want to take a moment to compliment and thank the city manager and all the staff that worked on putting together this brochure on the plastic bag tax in the City of Roanoke. And I know this is just one way that, this is being communicated, the same message many different ways. But I especially like the fact that we're, when we ask, why is this tax important? It's not important so we can balance our budget. It's important because of the affected environment of having these bags. And then what does the plastic bag tax money fund? There's a limited number of things. So we can't just put this in the general fund and spend it for anything that we might like. But lastly, I just really like this little tagline on the front here. Bring your bag, keep your change. Put that nickel in your savings, okay? I've said this before, and I'll say it one more time. Please don't pay five cents for a bag. That's just crazy, pay five cents for a bag. Bring a bag with you, a reusable bag that can be brought time after time. And I hope that, as much as we can use some of this money for, for the environmental projects and other things that are listed here, I hope we never collect a single nickel off of anybody because everybody gets it and starts using their own bags instead of paying for a plastic bag at the store. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Bespinch?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, Mr. Cobb, can we have some of those bags? Some of the council members, just so we could hand them out to some folks?
Yeah, we're currently, the, the bags that we've had, we have provided out to SNAP and with recipients and so on. We've actually just ordered some additional.
Oh, okay.
So yes, once we get those, we should be able to, our, our next focus is actually getting them to folks that are outside of that, but elderly, for example, or others that might be on some kind of fixed income and getting those out. But certainly I'll let you all know when we have more of those available. So, yep.
Okay.
All right. Any other information on motions and miscellaneous business? Madam Clerk, are we all set for Friday night parade?
Yes, sir.
In terms of what we're doing and...
And where we line up.
Yes. I believe Krista has sent out some information. She will be updating you closer to the, the day of the event.
Okay. Okay. I thank all of you all for coming out at the Christmas tree lighting. I think every member of council was present there. And that's...
And we felt loved and appreciated.
Who was that?
She said, we felt loved and appreciated. And you know, we're arrested.
You're in the big, you're in the big leagues now. That happens sometime. That happens. All right. We now need the certification of closed meeting. I'm going to call on a council member, Vice Mayor, to read the certification.
I move, with respect to any closed meeting just concluded, that each member of city council in attendance certify to the best of his or her knowledge that, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act; and, two, only such public business matters as were identified in any motion by which any closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered by the members of council in attendance.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, or we...
I'll call the roll, sir. Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Bespinch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Ah.